Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session. It's Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023. It's good to see everyone here this morning. Hopefully we can get started. Commissioner Ward, can you leave us some prayer in place today?
Yes. Lord, we come to you this morning as we conduct our county business. We pray for everyone in our county that's sick or just needs some prayers. We pray for everyone in this room, Lord. We pray that you will guide our way today as we do our county's business and serve our people. Thanks in heaven. Thank you and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, just by way of housekeeping, Commissioner Amison is attending via Zoom this morning. Just want to make sure everyone's aware. That's what we're doing. We do have something we need to add to the agenda this morning, Attorney Schuler, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Yes, yesterday afternoon, I had completed the initial draft of a potential ordinance for stormwater management requirements on St. George Island. I thought it would be appropriate to have at least some brief discussion with the board, maybe get some guidance from you and thoughts from the board. In order for us to have a public hearing on the 17th, I have to have a final draft on file at the clerk's office by Thursday. So we still have a little time to discuss it. But that was not part of my original report, nor is it on the agenda. So it would need to be added to the agenda.
Okay. So is there anything else that needs to be added, Mr. Mayor?
You got anything else?
Neither do I.
And I would also say for the board and the public, Mr. Kerrington, your county planner has not yet had the opportunity to review this draft. I've had a general discussion with him about different issues, about basically administrative matters, about how they process applications in office, but he's not actually seen this draft yet.
Okay. So do we have a motion to?
I had one thing. The clerk just said something. There is a manual check, and it has to be paid to Kelly's funeral home for that incident there.
Okay.
I just wanted to state the amount.
Okay, so it's a check for $805.
That's correct. We received the invoice last night.
Right. So we need to also add this to the agenda to be run as a manual check?
Yes, please.
Is that it? All right. So do we have a motion to adopt the changes to the agenda?
We'll just, let us re-do it.
I'm just here calling balls and strikes. I can't make any motions or seconds.
Nation.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. First up on the agenda is paying the county's bills and approving the minutes from the budget hearing of September 26th, the regular meeting from September 19th, and the special meeting from September 29th.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Now moving on to public comments. We have one this morning. I think she's appearing via Zoom. This is Debbie Jordan.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Debbie Jordan, and you can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Okay, same. I sent a letter to each of you yesterday. I included Mr. Fonda on it as well. I sent it just the other day. This is just to make you guys aware of something. I want to make very clear, not complaining, showing you a situation in hopes that we can find a way to resolve it. Over by Chip Morrison Drive Beach Access, the amount of garbage that, somebody sent me pictures from there, the amount of overflowing garbage, the person states there were hypodermic needles included in that garbage, is really disgusting, and I wouldn't want to bring my families around it, and nor would any of you. And like I said, I'm not placing blame on anyone. What I'm calling for today is to say, can we be resourceful? How can I help? How can others try to resolve this problem? Because there's definitely out there is, you know, tagging on the area out there, and we want better than that for our community. I know we all do. So I just wanted to make you aware of the situation and see what, any part I can do to help, I will, and see if we can come up with any solutions. That's really all I have to talk about this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Clerk of Court, Michelle Maxwell.
Good morning. Michelle Maxwell, Clerk of Court. Pursuant to Florida Statute 197.502, three years after the day the land was offered for public sale, the land shall excheat to the county in which it is located, free and clear. All tax certificates, accursed taxes, and liens of any nature against the property shall be deemed canceled as a matter of law, and no further legal force and effect, and the clerk shall execute an excheatment tax deed vesting title in the Board of County Commissioners of the county in which the land is located. The Board voted in August of 18, 2020, not to purchase these properties. Therefore, they became eligible for excheatment to the property, to the county, on July 14th, 2023, and August the 11th, 2023. The clerk's office is authorized by law to execute and report an excheatment tax deed for the following properties. So I have attached copies of each parcel that's already been recorded in the public records of Franklin County. And if you'll see the attachments, there's six total parcels that Franklin County now owns. And I tried to give you copies of where it's located. I don't have the address, but there's parcels and it's located in Caravelle. I just don't have the exact property address. So just for your information, that you know that you have these properties now, free and clear title.
Great.
There are, Clerk Maxwell, looking at them, it looks like all of these are two parcels together. Is that what I'm, that's what I was seeing anyway. Because everyone says it's one when you pull it up on the, well, even the pictures you provided, they look like two.
Right. Well, if you, I mean, if you look at the deeds, you've got Block 1 through 16, Block 31, and then you've got lots, I think it's 1 through 16, yeah, and Block 33, and then the same 34, 35. So they're all parcels that are together, and there's like one across the street from that. The copy that you have is not really a great copy. But if you look on the property appraised website, you can see the map where it's located, and it looks like there is personal property right next to that first parcel of land.
Yes, there is, yeah. Yep.
So just for your information, so you know what they have.
Think he has definite issue.
Yeah.
I want to say maybe the property may have been located on 17th Street in Caravelle. It's in the city, I think, City of Caravelle.
I think it is located in the city.
Yeah. I'm not sure. I tried to find the property addresses this morning, and I couldn't really look.
Looks like Avenue L or Avenue I.
Yeah. Well, that'd be something good to talk about for the future, because we have had discussions about trying to do workforce housing, so that might be something worth looking into. So is it, do we need to take any action this morning?
No action. This is just information. It's already done. I had it reported on Friday, so it's already titled in Franklin County.
Okay. Now, I was thinking that there was a case, because I was looking yesterday on the property appraised website, and when I clicked on it, they said Franklin County. I saw that. This is already done.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. They took care of it on Friday.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioners, y'all have any questions for the clerk? Thank you, clerk.
Thank you.
Then we're going to move on to Department Director's reports. Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Roads and Bridges. Morning, sir.
Morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Doing well.
I've got no actionable items this morning, but I do got a couple issues, which it was St. George Island, which we've had a lot of rain, and it's right there at Sawyer, East Sawyer and Brown, and West Sawyer. There's a lot of flooding issues going on. And what's happened through the years, people, which I'm sure you're aware of what that pond is right there, which we discussed it a few years ago. And the people around that place has bought land and built up, and now that thing, when you get a lot of rain, it builds up, floods the roads, and it pushes back to the west, back toward Brown, and all that just floods all them people. So they used to be a little, that water used to build up and run to the bay up by that area, but through the years, it's been filled up. So I talked to landowners and told them I'd bring it up for the board, and maybe, you know, in the future, we could look at that and try to figure out some way to put some kind of drainage in that area.
Yeah. I don't know if that would require us getting a permit from DEP, but whatever we have to do, I'm good with pursuing it. First, we need to find out, and this is what I communicate with all the, there was four or five different property owners I spoke with yesterday by phone or email.
Yes, sir.
First, we need to find out what historically was there, if there was already something going out to the bay. Because I think that's going to give us a leg up on getting DEP to recertify or to reapprove it. You know what I mean? So we definitely, it's, looking at the property appraiser side, it shows like the property's cut out.
Yes.
But if you look at it now, it's all one solid piece of property.
Yeah, all been filled in. And the landowner said they would work with us, or DEP, or whoever, just so they could figure out some way to pull some of that water off of it when we get a lot of rain, so.
Attorney Schuler, we have to, if we try to pursue something like that, what are the steps we'd have to take to try to get DEP approval to put something under that road, especially by, on either side of Brown, where it comes into North Sawyer? Because I mean, there's, I don't know if it's sea level rise. I don't know exactly what it is. It can't all be attributed to the fact that somebody built a piece of property or built a house. That might not have helped, but I think it's more than one issue. And these residents, you know, every time it rains now, they've got six, eight inches of water all throughout their property.
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, the person that used to handle all of that for the county was Mr. Pierce, and he's been gone for the last few years. So we may have to look at getting a consultant to help, assist the county in whatever DEP permitting processes are there. I've never done it on behalf of them.
Is that something the MRD could help us with?
Well, that's probably engineers working.
Dewberry. I was going to say, that's what you, that's what engineers are for.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that's the next step, when the, is engage them and find out what steps we'll do with the thing.
Yeah. And have them report something back at the next meeting.
Yes.
And we, I mean, that's the only way for that water to get out, is go across Sawyer and run to the bay. And it tries to feed that way, but it can't, you know, because it's being built up. But you could put a small pipe, you know, you know, after it's all inspected, you know, DEP allows it. It wouldn't have to be no big pipe to put on that road to pull some of that water out, so.
Well, the only issue with any of that, and I tried to express it to all the residents I spoke to yesterday, if you put something where water can go out, when the tide gets higher, guess what's coming in?
That's correct, that water.
So you know what I mean? It's not a perfect situation, but anyway, I tried to make sure they understood that.
Yes, sir. But you're right.
Anything else, Mr. Howard?
I, Mr. Chairman, if you would go to page 20 of your packet, item number six. The county receives a request, which I attached from the Florida Forest Service, for access to approximate a 2.5 mile span of McIntyre Road for timber sale. The Board is aware, McIntyre is a weight-restricted road, so a special use agreement or permit may be in order if the request is approved. I believe Commissioner Sanders, which, Clint told me he did speak to you, Commissioner, I believe, or someone from Forests. And Howard, they're aware of this request. More discussion and possible action if you want to approve this request. And Attorney Schuler would have to be involved in this discussion, as he issued the last special use permit that they use for the beetle, that beetle infestation that they had.
I thought it had nothing to do with beetle infestation.
Not this one. No, it's just a thinning.
I think we need Attorney Schuler, let Attorney Schuler take care of it.
Okay.
Because he's already working on it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sanders, may I address the Board? This was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago. On this request, I pulled up all the prior documentation. And what happened was there, as Mr. Maron pointed out, the Board years ago imposed an axle limitation and a weight limitation on McIntyre, which effectively prevented log trucks and other heavy vehicles from using that road. I mean, it's a maintenance headache for the county with those big trucks on that road. You know, you had residences back there. They couldn't traverse the road, so the Board enacted that ordinance over several decades ago. More recently, the Board adopted an ordinance that amended the prohibition and allowed a special use permit under certain conditions that were related essentially to mitigating beetle infestation that had occurred on both sides of the road up at McIntyre. When this matter was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago, as I said, I pulled up the record. The request doesn't meet the parameters of the ordinance as it's currently adopted, which is prohibition on weight and axle limits, except when you're removing timber to mitigate and treat beetle infestation. When this request was brought to my attention, it's merely a thinning operation. So my question was, well, can thinning timber be considered treatment of beetles? And the answer I got back from forestry was no, it is not. So I've just let the matter drop at that point, because there was no way for us to issue a special use permit. So I've already looked at this, and it just doesn't meet the parameters of the county's ordinance. So a special use permit cannot be issued.
So is that the final saying, what we're doing, or?
Oh, that's the legal opinion of what the law currently says. I mean, y'all are the final decision makers. If you're telling me to make a different decision or a different ordinance, I mean, that's per view of the Board. But, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the request doesn't meet the ordinance, and special use permit request cannot be granted.
With that, I'm going to take his recommendation.
So you make the motion to do what?
Do not, deny, then?
Just take no action.
Take no action.
I mean, special use permit can't be issued under the parameters as I understand them. But the thinning operation is not for treatment of pine beetles, so therefore, the special use permit does not apply.
So basically, I'm hearing with no action taken, basically denying. So basically, I'm hearing with no action taken, uh, basically denying their request for access to McIntyre Road.
No action, okay.
Sounds like they have no reason to access the timber anyway, if there's no bug infestation, it sounds like they just, in my opinion, it sounds like they're just wanting to thin, or use the timber for, to sell it to, to make a little money, I, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I think, I have a little bit of personal knowledge of, of timber operations, and thinning is a normal part of, of temp, growing timber. I mean, essentially, you plant it, then you come in, uh, usually something less than ten years later, seven, eight, ten years later, you thin it, because if you make the same mistake that I made, and you don't thin, uh, for, then you end up, your timber doesn't grow, you end up having to clear cut little small pines that are sold for pulp, as opposed to bigger pines that are more valuable for soft timber, and, um, you know, depending on how big you let them get, it, they could become poles, it could become, um, you know, plywood, I mean, there's all sorts of different classifications out there that are way above my knowledge level, but thinning is a normal part of timber operations, and, I mean, I understand why they went to do it, but the ordinance that was adopted by the board only allows issuance of the special use permit under, uh, the conditions that you are, you're treating the timber for a beetle infestation, and they told me this is not a beetle infestation, it's just a thinning operation, so. Yeah, I don't know what else to tell them, I mean, I'd like to be able to help them, I'd like to be able to issue the special use permit, but, I mean, the board's ordinance says what it says.
And they haven't asked us to amend that ordinance, have they?
Um, one could interpret their request in that fashion, yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Maron?
I'm sorry?
Anything else?
Oh, not for, not for Howard, no, sir, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Howard, I noticed something.
Yes, sir.
Uh, are we still doing the Friday schedule, when is that gonna end?
No, no, sir, we still doing it, probably, probably the end of October.
Okay, cause I noticed that, uh, in your report that you sent in, we've been getting actually quite a bit of, uh, inmate labor lately, but none on Fridays, hardly.
We have, yeah, Fridays, some, I mean, sometime they send them out, and they, this past Friday, they had certs, they, uh, had reports, there've been a lot of drops and stuff, uh, dropped off, so they didn't let them out this past Friday.
Okay, that's only something.
But we have been getting ten and twelve inmates all through the week, so they, it is picking up some, so, yeah.
That is good. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Neighbors or concerns to share while he's here?
Nah, I do, Mr. Chairman, I'll get with you after the meeting, I'd just like to get with you before the meeting, but I didn't get a chance to yesterday, so I'll get with you after the meeting, I don't wanna put you on the spot right here. It's nothing big, big at all.
So I can get up with me when the meeting's over tomorrow, and we, uh, take care.
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna thank Howard for what he did, and, and also Jenny Daniels, upon sixty-seven, I was concerned as if everybody would have been if they'd been in their district, uh, and so they got the message boards out there, with the, uh, box cupboard being put in at Walnut Creek, I was worried about the signage, oh my God. But anyway, they, we've got the two message boards out there, so I'm gonna thank y'all too.
And that'll help, you know, big time too, especially with that light, and, and you know, probably it's coming up real, it's fixing to get real foggy. October, November, December, you get a lot of foggy weather, so.
Yeah, and those log trucks go up and down there, uh, hauling the logs out, and my main concern was them blocking off that whole right-hand side of the road for two weeks before they even started to work.
Correct.
Although you got two traffic lights on the, either side of it, uh, it is good to have those message boards, because they put them about a half a mile before you get to the pro, project going on, and then you know that it's up there, but I really thank y'all for doing that, because the inspector happened to be on, sitting on the side of the road when I went up to check it out, and I pulled in and I introduced myself to him, and I said, I'm the Worrisson Commissioner, but I have to say that my number one thing, my number one job in this county is to protect, to help, safety and welfare of the people.
Correct.
And, and he said, Commissioner, I agree with you, so it was a good thing, it made me feel better knowing the inspector was agreeing with it.
Especially going north, excuse me, when you go around that curve, going north, I mean, it's, it's right there, I mean.
On that bad curve.
Yeah, yeah, if you ain't.
Thank y'all.
You're welcome.
Thank y'all, Mr. Howard, for everything you do, we really appreciate it.
Thank y'all, Commissioner.
Mr. Fonda Davis, Solid Waste Director. Hall of Control, Parks and Recreation, good morning.
I have one action item for you this morning, uh, it's in reference to a vacant position for board's information due to the resignation of Mark Custer on Friday, September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, as an equipment operator in the Solid Waste Department, a position is now available as an equipment operator. Uh, board's action to allow me to advertise to fill that position, please.
Certainly.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
That's it, that's all I have.
Thank y'all for everything you do, we appreciate it.
Chairman, I sure do, uh, same page, page twenty, item eight, very bottom. As the county's aware, the county's Parks and Rec Department, they're severely understaffed, and they're about to lose another employee. That's not the employee that Fonda brought up this morning, we're talking about a different employee. Um, in addition, uh, access to inmate labor, that's limited, Commissioner. So, came up with that idea, and I discussed this possibility of engaging a contractor to maintain all county sports fields. I'll discuss this with Mr. Fonda Davis and Ms. Erin Griffith as an option to move forward with. This option will allow the current Parks and Recreation staff to focus on the county's beaches, the boat ramps, and the parks that do not have sports fields. The board is interested in this, in exploring this option on a trial basis, staff could seek estimates. Based on that amount, we could then determine how to proceed based on our bid policy on engaging a contractor. So, kinda wanted to discuss that with the board this morning, and see if you would like me to explore this possibility, see how much it costs, bring that back to you, you know, I'd bring an estimate back to you, and then we decide how we, how we could move forward with this. I mean, Commissioners, again, you know, we all know about the inmate situation, it looks good today, then tomorrow it's back down again. You know, Fonda's be, with this other employee I'm talking about, that's what, that'll be two vacancies? Two, three you have now, in just in Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec is, uh, two vacants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And possibly three.
Possibly three. I, I, I see this, uh, as an option, um.
Well, personally, I'm good with getting the information, at least coming back so we'll know what, what we're looking at.
Yes.
I'm, I'm good with that discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I, 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 I agree with this, and I hate to say this, but as our county grows by leaps and bounds in the future, this is something we may have to look to for other departments as well, um, because y'all know what I say every time, we don't need to depend on the inmates to provide a service for our citizens of our county, that's my opinion, you know, we don't need to do that, we don't need to deny them, you know, ditch cleaning, grasping mow, just because we're not getting the inmates, but that being said, my only issue with this is if these individuals, and I know this is just preliminary, but I'm just hypothetically thinking into the future, these people are getting paid way more than our current county employees, that might pose an issue too, I mean, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner, we can't, I can't control in any way what a contractor pays if he, if he subs, or he pays it to his direct employees, um, I don't know what their benefit package is, anything like that, but I just know we really need some help, and a lot, there are other, other smaller counties and school districts that are doing this now. I mean, even, uh, the, not for Mr. Davis to wear another hat, but our own school district has hired a company to do the football fields, to maintain their football field, it just, I'm sorry, it's just, it's a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, we definitely, Mr. Chairman, have to make sure that our fields are up and running, especially during season, so. Is this something we need, this is just to basically engage, uh, and asking them to give us a quote on what it would cost?
Actually, I'm gonna, uh, Mr. Davis and I are gonna try and reach out and get a, a few estimates, we, we gotta get a feeling as to what it's gonna cost. I'd like to, um, break down, uh, each field individually to get a cost, to see if we bid, maybe we bid per field, you know, you have different companies in here, I don't know, I just, I do, I need a sense of what it's gonna cost to bring that back, to see if it's worth it, cause we gotta make sure, number one, Mr. Davis has money in his budget to do this. I'm hoping that what it does, because he doesn't have to pay for, I mean, everybody sees an employee's salary, they don't realize the cost of the benefits to the county, but I hope that's, there's an offset there. Hopefully, there'll also be an offset on equipment, because the contractor will be using their own equipment, not the county's. So, we, we have to balance all that, but I need a sense of the number, but I didn't wanna go out and start, you know, trying to get this information for you, and you guys, this is not the direction you wanted to even go with or explore.
And there'll also, there will also be an added benefit as well, because then, you know, time can be spent on your other park locations, where those parks can be, um, maintained adequately.
Well, I think we had in public comments, something about the garbage, but that's not, and it's just, it's when you're short-staffed, you have to, when you're short-staffed, um, I'll, I'll go ahead, I guess we, do we make a motion on this for you to go and engage?
Well, just some direction that go ahead and if, if everybody's good with it, and.
We'll kinda have to, I mean, like I said, we can't let our fields go and disrepair, disarray, just cause we're short-staffed, so.
Commissioner Amison, you good with that too?
Uh, yeah, I, if you think about it, I was gonna jump in there and explain my side of, just the way I'm looking at it. You know, we, we could have these positions out there advertised, but nobody wants to fill them, I mean, we've had some of these out there. Um, eventually, I mean, I'd like to have, I'd like to have a person that worked, but the reality of it is that we're not getting those people to come in and apply for these jobs, um, and it's happening not just in, in the county, but everywhere, in, in, in every occupation just about, so, I, I, let's get the numbers and look at it, and see what, what, I mean, it might be the best way to go, we don't know until we see the numbers anyway, so we might as well get them. Can y'all hear it?
Yep, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm.
Loud and clear.
I've got some comments.
Well, nobody yelled at me, so I figured.
Yeah, I've got some comments, which I won't go like what I say.
Go for it.
What, listen to me, stay up.
That's all we're here for, that's all we're here for, Commissioner.
But, no, what I think to say is this, we did a, did a study for the employees that had pay raises, increases, incentives, we're looking at incentives, you know, through there. My example looks too bad, it's okay.
No, okay.
But I got to say what I got to say, okay? We've had some good people in this county workforce that has left this, this county workforce, because they're still not getting enough pay to put up, you know, to grow their families, everybody knows that. We've all grew up in this county one way or the other, and it's hard, it's hard. But you lost one of the best people that I've ever seen do field, because you couldn't make enough money. Now, that's sad, that's sad. Evergreen did a study, they told you what you needed to pay, but they're not the ones that live here and see these people every day, and interact with these people every day. That's a good idea that you got, and, and I agree with it, oh, heartily, and I don't have no problem with you going out and searching, but what we need to do is take care of the county employees even better than what we do. I know we're looking at the incentives and all that, but, but this, the fellow that was doing the field, he wouldn't have laughed if he'd gotten enough money. I think we need to let the department head take care of their department, and if it's, and that's why we're looking at what we're doing. But I've got to say it, cause I've been keeping my mouth shut, and I can't do it no more, because it's the county employees. But we've got two people that left there, at, at, uh, Fonda's Department. We've had some at the road department, we've had some at the, the, uh, landfill, we've had some at the mosquito control. You know, we've gotta let these department heads do what they feel like they need to do, and if they've got a guy that they feel like needs to make five or ten dollars more, because they've got, being able to work the field, let them to work the field. But we've got to do that, because we're taking those contractors, we're taking those employees that we did have, and replacing them with contractors who don't live here, who don't hire none of the family around here. See what I'm saying? So I'm looking out for the people of Franklin County, is what I'm trying to look at, boy, and this is my mind, you know, I'm, I'm good. And it's good, and I mean, it's good, it's a good process, if you got one out, but I'm still, I still don't think it's right.
I, I, I hear you, and I, I agree, we could, we could and we should always do better for our employees, but, uh, as Commissioner Amison said, this is not just a county problem, you have other industries paying twenty-five-plus dollars an hour and can't get anybody to work, and so that's, so it's a twofold problem, we have to take care of our county employees, but even giving raises and increasing, it's not, it's not panning out to people coming to work, it's just, it's, I'm sorry, so, don't, don't take this the wrong way, it's the weirdest country right now, you know, it's, I don't know what it is, what's causing this, but it's, you know, everybody's looking for people to work, everybody, no matter what they pay.
We've been discussing with Evergreen, are we gonna, how we gonna do this back in incentives and stuff like this, what do we need to do? You know, um, you know, if they, if they can do this, then you're paying more money, well, if we're thinking about that, you know, I, I don't see why we can't go ahead and do it. I just hate, I just hate good people le, leaving the county workforce, and then we're having to go and get contractors to come in and do something that I know some of our local folks can, could do, so. I don't know what, no, but, but anyway, but anyway, that's just my feelings, and I had to, I had to say how I feel, but, I mean, it's nothing to do with you, cause you're trying to find a solution to the problem, and we're hoping to grow the sports complexes, yes, we are. But we gotta take care of family first.
Well, that's, Commissioner, that's why, uh, the Evergreen thing was complex, cause when they come to us with the original one-year plan, which was only supposed to be, we'd had to went up on the military rate to do that in one year. Uh, no, it was over a million dollars, I think it was a million and a half at one time, so that's why we tried to do it phased in, because taxpayers ones are paying for this, um, and I, and I'm good with what you're saying, but we, when we adopted the Evergreen study, we went from having a discussion about giving employees five hundred dollars a year as a raise, or a thousand dollars as a one-time deal. That had been done for decades in this county, that's the way it was approached, so what we're seeing is we didn't start doing that kind of plan fast enough, and it's catching us, and the bigger thing we were trying to address other than just pay was the compression issue, and you can only do what you can do, so I'm not trying to be disparaging toward anybody, but the last time the county went up from eighteen thousand min, uh, minimum starting salary to twenty-five, they didn't move anybody else up, they just compressed the wages, so we've been trying to unfold all that too, and I know it, it's not the best way to go about it, it probably needs to be quicker, but at the same time, we are not having the same discussions about e, employee paying employee salaries that we had when I first got on the board, we're just not, we're just not. Uh, I know that it's not solving all of our issues, but sometimes you're just gonna have issues, but also involved in doing something with either incentive pay, or something, some kind of pay for, uh, qualifications, or.
Performance.
Performance, all that kind of stuff, that's gonna fall back to all the directors, cause they're gonna have to do those employee evaluations every year.
But do y'all get where I'm coming from? I hate to see us having to go out of the county to get contractors, and I know we've got people right here in this county that can do it.
Well, at the end of the day, I don't think that, uh, unless I'm misunderstanding, I don't think that, cause you've mentioned it a couple of times, I don't think that we're saying we're trying to find a vendor outside the county. Sure, if there's somebody in the county that can do the job, if, if there's somebody in the county that can do the job, I'm sure they can apply, or when we do an RFQ, they'll be able to put their name in the hat.
And that's one of my reasons to say that we would break down, break down our, our bid, part, or whatever we do, part by part, because it might be overwhelming for, for one person to be, to be in charge of, I mean, we have a lot. So if you do it part by part, you might be able to get more locals saying, hey, I could do this one part, you see? That, that, that was my idea behind the whole, uh, behind this plan.
But, other, I mean, we were told we couldn't do prefer, a preferential tr, uh, preference, you know, we can't, we can't do that, we know that. But I'm just, it just gets on my heart sometimes, and I'm, as a commissioner, I like people to know where I'm coming from with something, and it's just, I just hate all these people are feeling. And it's just, I just hate all these people are feeling, they had to quit the county to make money, and it bothers me.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not, finally, the Parks and Rec Director, but I could stand, and I'm the one upside looking in. That's the toughest, I'm sorry, that's the most labor-intensive, toughest department that we have. Not, not, no disrespect to any other county...
No.
To the road department, you know, building, but Parks and Rec is tough, and, and I don't think it's always about the money. You have people that have to work on Saturdays, on Sundays, and they don't always want to work on the weekend. Not, some of them will transfer somewhere else for the same money if they just have a Monday to Friday job. You know, it's, it's a tough department. It really is. I, I see what they have to go through sometimes. It's rough. I mean, they, they have, you have four or five employees on Friday, they're working, getting ready for the soccer day of ball, you know? So, he had a majority of his Parks and Rec in one spot for so many hours working, just to get one park ready for, for a county event. That's tough.
I appreciate you letting me make that comment.
Oh, no problem, no problem at all. That's what we're here for. Uh, and it might be, as we have this discussion with Evergreen, that we need to look at doing, and I don't even know the correct term for it, but I know they do it in medical professions, different professions. If you work at night or on the weekends, you get a, a differential pay, that's it. So, it might be that, when we're having this discussion with Evergreen, we need to do that specifically for Parks and Recs, because they do work every weekend. They work seven days a week.
It's like the on-call pay thing.
Yes, exactly. I mean, if, if we could find a way to make Parks and Rec so inviting that people want to transfer from other departments to go there, down the hill. Good luck with that, I know what you're saying. I know, I know what you're telling me.
Well, no, I think it's all good, necessary discussion we've had during this morning.
Mr. Chairman, I will say this, too, and at budget, that's, that's why I was saying, you know, all the constitutionals get their budget and can, most of the time, divvy up money how they seem fit. We should also let these directors do the same.
Yes.
Um, that's why I was passionate about that. But in addition to that, just so you guys know, I, just out of curiosity, I reached out to some of our neighboring counties to see what their starting pay for these employees were, and a neighboring county is starting out at 19,000. And in my mind, I'm thinking, how are they going to adjust for the minimum wage requirement in 2027, 2026? So, that, I, and I know, because I said, why would somebody want to come to the county and, and pay, and get paid 20, I know we got benefits, I get that, but 21, that, $29,000 a year, I guess, is what the startup pay is here? How's somebody going to afford to live on that? And I agree with what Commissioner Sanders was saying, but I think it's just the, the climate of the, the, what we live in now, the, the climate we live in, nobody wants to work for any kind of money.
It's crazy.
It's just, it's, but I, I, I think that this is not going to hurt, although I, I, like I said, agree with Commissioner Sanders and what she's saying, but we have to do something, because there's just nobody to work, so, and we can't have you short-staffed. That's not fair to you or the rest of your employees, because they're having to extra do work because of the lack of help. So, I mean, I don't know, that's...
I think I, I completely agree with you. But at the end of the day, it's like you said, Commissioner John, at the end of the day, when we do that incentive and stuff, just like constitutional officers do, we need to give our department heads the ability, if they see somebody that does the extra stuff, like this guy that he had with Phil, give him a little bit of extra money, going to make him stay, because that's his home. This is his home. It's just something that's heavy on my heart today, because like I said, it's about the people of Franklin County, and I just want to make sure that we do everybody right in the county. But, you know, and I'm not talking about just the county workers, I'm talking about everybody. Put these jobs out, advertise them. There may be somebody out there in the county that can do them, you know? So, let's do that, and let's, in, in, in other words, let's take care of home first, if we can, without any preference.
Just, just, just by way of wrapping this up, I will say, Commissioners, I, I was talking to some business owners in my district that were, over this last summer, were paying people, of course, there wasn't any qualification for it, they were washing dishes. They were paying those people $25 an hour, plus overtime, and could not keep people.
That's...
$25 an hour. I'm talking, these were, uh, some of them, that they, because I asked the question. One of them was a 20-year-old, the other one was a 24-year-old. They were paying them $25 an hour, plus overtime, and they, they quit before, in three or four weeks, because it's work.
Something's wrong somewhere.
I will say our generation, this ten ages...
Something's wrong somewhere, y'all.
Yeah, I told them, I said, you ever go out in the free time, I'll be washing dishes. $25 an hour, that's a lot of money.
They make a man a big deal.
Yeah. But anyway, just a perspective. Do you want to have anything else for Mr. Davis? See how we do you? Every time you get up there, we make you stand there for a long time.
Yeah.
I don't know that Mr. Howard was up there for a good bit of my time.
Oh, all right. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you all. We'll get through this.
Yes, sir. We appreciate, y'all appreciate what y'all do for us.
Okay.
Ms. Jennifer Daniels, Emergency Management? All right, start the clock.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have, uh, two action items, and forgive me, I left my glasses at the office, but my first one is to request the Board's approval and signing of our sub-grant agreement for Hurricane Idalia, and it's going to be for reimbursement, um, for the damages we, we incurred during Hurricane Idalia. This will be the, the agreement between us, the state of Florida, and, uh, F, or FEMA.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
And my second one is just requesting the Board's approval and signing of our statewide mutual aid agreement. It's time to update it.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
That's all.
Anyone have anything for Ms. Daniels while she's here?
Just make her stand up there for a little bit, to make it even with the Howard and the...
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Dewitt Polis, Mosquito Control Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
No action items. Uh, just want to let you know that we have installed another beaver deterrent over on Lighthouse, uh, Road, and, and in the process of building one for Baywood over in Caravelle. I have, uh, I'm in the process of filling the full-time position. This, since October's been a year since it's been approved, and I had someone come in, interviewed them, hired them, and then they called me 6:30 next morning, said they didn't want the job. So, or text me. So, uh, but I have somebody now, so we're doing the preliminary, you know, the blood work and all those tests, so we'll be filling that position. And, uh, other than that, we're, uh, building materials, getting material together to build the deterrence for the beavers, and, and we, at the end of October, we'll start our ditch maintenance program, if we can get the inmates to do it.
All right. So, anyone have any questions for Mr. Polis?
Just a couple of comments.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, when, when are you going to be closing down the spray season?
Uh, it really depends on the, the weather, but normally, that's around the 30th of October. Sometimes we get over in the first week, second week of November.
Okay, thank you, Dewitt, for that. And also, the main ditch there in Caravelle, it's back like it was.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Putnell. Yeah, I talked to Mr. Putnell, Dustin, about that the other day, and it's not down at the, the cupboard, it's somewhere in between again, and he said he's just purchased a boat with the city, and that him and one of his employees fixed to go through there. Of course, that's been a week ago, but I'll touch base with him and see what he's found. But there's another blockage in there somewhere.
Yeah, it's not on, yeah, it is, because it's not on the gray avenue side, because that's like a river running, you know, in there.
Yep.
Although it does concern me where that land had been all cleared out and right to the ditch, it bothers me.
Yep.
But it's up there around 67, behind grandma's, my grandma's old property back in there.
Yep, it's between, uh, 67 and probably about halfway that ditch, but I think they, because they were actually trapping on the gray avenues in, trying to trap some of the beavers, but they haven't been in from the west end of that ditch, which he said was going to be.
There may be a beaver down in that part of it, then.
It's about basically there.
Thank you, Dewitt.
All right.
I have a question, Mr. Polis.
Yes.
This ditch y'all keep referring to, how wide is it, is the widest point?
That ditch?
Yeah.
It varies. Uh, someplace, it actually looked like a lake.
That's what I'm thinking.
Back, back, and that was over on the east end. On the west end, Commissioner Sanders talking about, it's a lot narrower for probably, well, it's, it's, it's almost three-quarters of a mile through that ditch. Uh, but probably about halfway, it widens up, kind of just bleeds out into the, the Thai Thai and stuff. But I'm sure on that west end, we're going to find another blockage.
So, while you're here, I just want to mention you, too, and I keep forgetting to do this. Been talking to some of the property owners, because we're having a problem with the one property owner on, on the end of Daisy Street. They've had, uh, it blocked where the water's supposed to flow by there, to go to the bay down by Indian Creek. They've had that blocked now for a while. So, I'm talking to some of the adjacent property owners and see if they, we can go through the process of getting access through their, getting access easement to get to it from the other side, because that's something that, uh, keeps it backed up, because, I mean, it flows all the way through, kind of like the, what you're talking about. It flows all the way through East Point.
Mm-hmm.
It goes from one side of, uh, over by Otter Slide, it goes all the way back through by Tallahassee Street.
That's all part of Indian Creek.
But it, but it's getting blocked up at the end of Daisy, so it's not flowing all the way to the end.
I think, are you talking about the property that Mr. Garrett used to own?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I had an easement from him, so I probably need to pursue getting one of the new landowners.
Yeah.
And, uh, but that would be a probably, a really good project for the, the new little mini excavator.
Yes.
If we can access that ditch through that property...
Yes.
And, uh, get back there and clean that out.
So, if we can't do that, Mr. Charles Penicup also owns some property just to the east of it.
Yep.
Then I can get into it, and neither one of those work. I've been talking to Mr. West Estes from the side of Lakes on the Bluff.
Mm-hmm.
There, there is common, common area property that joins up to that, and we might could just come in through there.
Yeah.
So, one, one of those three ways, we need to figure out a way to get it done.
Yeah, I would, I would talk with, uh, I guess, with Mark Carrington, and find out the landowners, and, and obviously, get some kind of agreement with them.
Yep. Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Polis.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Eric Lovestrand?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Eric.
I don't have any action items for you today, but happy to answer any questions you might have about informational items in my report.
Uh, Mr. Eric, I, I, I do want to ask you a question this morning. Could you, just so we know for sure what it is, can you elaborate a little bit on number nine on your report, the Ag Adventures Program?
Yes, yes. We've been doing this program for fourth grade aged youth for many years now, throughout our extension district here. And basically, we take these kids out into the farm fields at the University of Florida Research Farm up near Quincy. And this year, we've got, um, participation planned from the ABC School and from the First Baptist School. K-12 School opted out this year, but, um, they get to go into the field and actually see crops out there and rotate through, I think, seven different stations, where they learn about peanuts in North Florida, corn, pumpkins, um, cotton, all the crops that we grow here in the Panhandle that are interesting to teach about. And they get samples of, um, some of those crops. I teach a section on peanuts every year while I'm up there. And so, they usually get some boiled peanuts, or something else like that, popcorn at the corn station, and they get to travel through a maze out there that's not made out of corn, like some of the mazes are, but it's a millet product that they grow here in the Panhandle area that the farm crew will cut a maze trail through. So, they get to spend about a half a day out there, actually in the field, learning about the ag products that, um, we have here in North Florida.
Good, that's good. I, I kind of felt that's like what it was, but I just, I wanted to ask so the public would know about that this morning, because, you know, this is one more different area with you guys also house, in-house, the 4H program on behalf of the county, and we're not big in agriculture, but, you know, you never know what, what's going to spark a child or lead them in the way they're going to go, so the more different things you can expose them to, the better off they are.
Yeah, we've added a new station recently, too. For the last couple of years, they have a, a station on ag technology, so they learn about how farmers now are utilizing drones to do crop surveys and, um, manage crops in a more efficient fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Eric. Anyone else have any questions or concerns for Mr. Eric? Mr. Eric, thank you for your time, we appreciate all you guys do.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Uh, Ms. Whitney Roundtree, Franklin County Public Library?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, I have one action item today, and that is that we need to appoint a representative, um, for Franklin County to our Wilderness Coast, um, Library Board. We currently have Ms. Brenda Humphrey serving one position, she's our Friends of the Library President. Um, the second position is usually appointed by the County Commission. Um, I did go ahead and ask Ms. Jennifer Daniels if she'd be interested in serving, and she was. Um, we already work closely together with training and public events. Um, both libraries were also disaster relief centers during Hurricane Michael, so I thought we could work closely together, um, to ensure that our libraries are prepared to serve our communities in the event of a disaster. Uh, it's just quarterly meetings, so it wouldn't, um, take up much of our time.
Okay.
So moved.
All right. Motion to approve, uh, appointing Ms. Jennifer Daniels to serve on the Wilderness Coast Library Board by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? Anything else?
Uh, I just wanted, one little other thing, is, um, two weeks, uh, will be National Friends of the Library Week, and our friends, um, they are just so wonderful. They are, um, an integral part to our libraries. Um, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have the facilities that we have today, we wouldn't have the programs that we have today if it wasn't for them. Um, so they'll be, uh, hosting their annual meeting October 18th at 4:00 at the East Point Library. Um, we will also be celebrating the 10th anniversary of the East Point Library and its current location, so, um, I invite the public, anyone who's interested in maybe becoming a Friends of the Library member, to come out and see what it's all about. Um, this is a great big group of people, but they're not going to be around forever, so we hope that, you know, new people will come in and support the library, and we hope to see you all there.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Whitney? Ms. Whitney, thank you as always for everything you do, uh, not only just for, on behalf of this board, but for the, uh, the residents, the county, and their children, uh, with that public library. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, and we'll be out at all the different Halloween events. The Friends have purchased book books. We'll be giving out free children's books. So if you've got some kids, bring them by to see us.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, TDC Administrator, Mr. John Solomon?
Good morning, Commissioners. John Solomon, TDC Director. Um, I only have one action item on the list, and this is the, um, 2023-2024 Small, Large, and Museum Grants. The TDC Board approved the grants on eight, nine. Um, wait, of course, we have to wait until the budget's approved before we can bring it to y'all. Um, these are for, uh, nonprofit and, um, events that happen throughout the county that we, um, reimburse their marketing up to a certain amount for each, um, level of how many days they have the thing. And also the museums, this is where they, you know, we pay the supplement for them to be open per, um, for, per month. And, um, this year, um, everybody who applied did qualify. Um, we didn't have to turn anybody down. Um, we, uh, the amount requested is 182,000 total. Uh, total amount budgeted was 228. We do always have a little bit extra that throughout the year, there may be events that either missed or had, they're volunteer organizations, so sometimes the person that used to do it no longer does it, and they didn't know they had to do it. Um, we had that issue here recently at the last meeting that they had changed treasure hands and they didn't know it was time to do it. So, um, we, uh, the board voted on eight, nine to recommend to the County Commission to approve the 2023-2024 Small, Large, and Museum Grants list.
Pleasure, the board?
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? This is all I like, under discussion. I like that you pointed out and made sure the board was aware, the commission was aware, that there is always a little bit more money budgeted to that item in case there are some of our nonprofits that either didn't make a deadline or, you know, different people. Or I, I just like that the board knows that, that there's money there, that we've not tried to exclude anybody or cut anybody out by deadline, so.
Correct. That's, and that's what, you know, we always say with the, you know, the TDC Board with this and the other things. They're guidelines, they're not set rules. These are, you know, we have to present to the board for these grants. But having that extra left over when something comes up, maybe it's a anniversary event for something that's coming up. It's only going to happen once every 20 years, and the TDC may want to be able to use that as, you know, part of the grant process. Having that money there for events is, you know, important for their marketing.
It is. Any other discussion before we vote? Seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And, um, the one thing I want you to go over with the board, um, is one of the information items. The entire TDC marketing team attended the, uh, 2023 Governors Conference for Visit Florida this past, uh, month. That's where we were actually with that meeting that we should have approved this. Um, and like I said, the entire team, uh, 2K Web Group, Tanna and Sterling both, uh, FCTV, Royce Rolstad and, uh, Bay Media, Cindy Clark, and myself attended. Not only did we attend, we had a booth in the media area where we marketed, um, Franklin County and the Forgotten Coast in the, um, media area, but also we taught a session on, you know, thinking outside the box, you know, marketing for a rural, uh, county. Uh, but also, uh, the team won two Flagler Awards. One for our social media, uh, campaign this year, which is "Don't Take Our Word For It." Uh, we have to credit Ms. Tanna for coming up with that catchy name, because I always think names help. And, um, then we also had our Villages re-engagement campaign. And of course, they laugh at me every time that we do that, but every time we've advertised in the villages, we've won a Flagler Award. So it's, um, evidently a, a key piece to, for marketing because they are travelers from our state. And we're seeing more and more in-state travel, um, from large cities. Miami, surprisingly, Orlando, Tampa, and Jacksonville are in the top 10 of places that are visiting our website and social media pages that are looking to come to Franklin County. So that in-state advertising is a big thing. So, but just wanted to let the County Commission know and everybody else that the TDC marketing team now has eight Flaglers in four years. So we're just very proud. These are not easy to win, and they're not, uh, we're not competing against just ourselves. This is against the House of Mouse and everybody else, so.
Everybody in state. Thank you, sir. Anyone have anything for Mr. Solomon, Commissioners?
Just congratulations.
Thank you. And, you know, the, like I said, we've got a very good team. It's them together comes up with these ideas, and it's amazing when you get to see everybody there when they get to hear Franklin County's name called. It's, it was a special experience this year. It's the first time all of us have been able to attend at one time, so.
Good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything.
Y'all have a great day.
You too. And Mr. Ted is on by.
Also, yes, he's not feeling well today, so, uh, but he's there. We, we already tested, so you should be here.
Mr. Ted Masteller, Inter Airport Manager?
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. Uh, sorry, can't be there with you this morning, but I thought it better not to be around anyone yet. You have my, uh, routine report. Most of it's for your information. However, I do have one item I, uh, I have informed you of, and that is, uh, uh, the security plan I had to use Sunday morning to call the TSA. We had a bomb threat at the airport. Uh, the, the FBI received this bomb threat, uh, email, and the Sheriff Department was already on site when Tara Magnum and Effentrick, and then Sheriff Deputy Jim Ward called me around 9:30. The FBI, the FBI had received an email.
Mr. Eric, I mean, all I know is, I know that, I don't know if they can track down that IP address that sent the email and hold them accountable, but I know people, I'm just glad nothing happened. Thank God, um, and it was not a credible threat. But we always need to take things into consideration, ensure that what we do have, plan-wise, um, worked. And it sounds like, Mr. Ted, you did everything. We have a plan in place to ensure that if, in the event something like this does happen, we're prepared.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Ted?
Couple items from my report. Commissioner Amerson, I'm going to do a couple airport items now while Ted is there. Um, item four, top of page 20. Uh, the new FBI lease that was approved in July of 2023, a lot of funding for a new airport maintenance position that would work under the supervision of your airport manager. The, a copy of that advertisement is, is attached for your review. I sure hope I did. Wants to prove the ad will run concurrently in-house and publicly. Try not to waste time with that. So I need board action to prove advertising for the airport maintenance specialists, again, in-house and publicly at the same time.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Item five, Commissioners, uh, Mr. Ted Masteller and Mr. Tom Mesher. He's the Vice Chairman of the AOED. Explained that a pedestrian gate lock at the airport FBI needs, needed repairing. Mr. Masteller, Mr. Mesher obtained a quote, which is attached for the equipment, and will do the installation themselves. In addition, they would like to purchase a couple of signs to direct the pilots and the passengers where to enter the ramp once they return from, from Appalachia, once you return to the airport from wherever they've been, especially in the evenings. The total cost of equipment signs, which shipping, should be around $5.50. I'm asking for board action to prove up to $5.50 for the purchase of the equipment signs, uh, for the pedestrian gate at the airport FBI.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this money's coming out of the airport budget?
Yes, it will.
All right, so move.
You're not paying attention.
To approve. I just wanted for the record.
Yes, I should have, and I should have put it, you correct, Commissioner.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I think that's all I had for Ted, Commissioners.
Okay. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Masteller?
Hope you're getting feeling better, Mr. Ted.
Thank you, thank you. I don't know what it is. I have just crazy. I think it's a continuation of COVID.
No, no, don't say that, Ted.
Yes, sir. It's, uh, it's, it's visiting some people's houses. Let's put it that way.
Yes.
Hope you're getting feeling better, Mr. Ted. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, thank you.
Might take a quick break.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
The Panhandle Players invites you to their production of River's Edge, written by local resident Rob Pierce. River's Edge features drama, comedy, and live musical performances, and it will transport you to a place where lives are changed forever by good friends, secrets, and those for whom the end justifies the means. This desert theater production is being presented September 28th through October 1st. Tickets are limited and are on sale now at panhandleplayers.org. This event is funded in part by the Franklin County TDC.
It's Halloween season. Are you looking for local ghost stories and area legends? Would you like to get hands-on experience with real ghost hunting equipment? If so, do it with Appalachia Ghost Tour. Walk the old streets of Appalachia Cola with your own personal ghostly guide and experience all that and more. Get tickets to this family-friendly tour at appalachghosttour.com. You'll have a frightfully good time.
Embrace the pace on Florida's Forgotten Coast.
Hi, I'm Kara Landis. I'm a professional Realtor in love with St. George Island. My husband and I and our dogs moved here in 2002. It's the beginning of an adventure that has never grown old in a community that is amazing. If you're thinking about moving to St. George Island or investing in our world-class real estate, then this community will be as important to you as the sand and surf.
Well, Kara, to me, is much more than an agent. She's become a friend. And since we bought the house, we've needed work done, and she knows everybody there is, uh, that can help us with that.
One of the key elements for the historical growth in value of St. George Island real estate is the fact that it's a great place to vacation and to live. The beauty of the Gulf of Mexico with its white sand beaches and blue sky has always been a magnet for me. It was love at first sight. As your Realtor, I can help educate you on the various aspects of buying and owning coastal properties. From taxes to coastal setback lines to where to find the best oysters, it's all part of being your Realtor.
Too often, our friends tell us of it being a hardship to buy a house and the, the state, the agent was gone as soon as the closing. We've had quite the opposite experience with Kara.
If you're looking to buy or sell real estate on St. George Island, I'd love to work with you. Please call or text me at 850-653-7753.
We would like to welcome you to Florida's Forgotten Coast. We hope you enjoy your stay here in Franklin County. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind you of some of our safety guidelines for our beautiful beaches.
Here on the Forgotten Coast, we love pets. Please observe our lease laws on the beaches and on other public places.
When visiting Franklin County beaches, please be aware of beach flags and surf conditions. For the most recent information on these conditions and more, please download the Forgotten Coast mobile app.
It is very important to us here in Franklin County that we make all our beaches accessible to everyone. We have placed mobile mass at different assets throughout the county. We plan to add more the coming year.
Franklin County has some of the most beautiful beaches in Florida. Let's keep it that way. Remember to remove all your trash before you leave and leave only footprints.
We welcome you to enjoy our beaches, but at the end of the day, please remember to remove all your beach gear before 9:00 PM. Remember, May through October, we have other visitors here, the sea turtles. So we need to keep our lights off at night on the beaches as well.
Your safety is important to us, so please remember when visiting our beautiful beaches, you're swimming at your own risk as we do not have lifeguards on duty.
We hope you enjoy your stay here, but please remember, no glass bottles on our beaches.
When visiting our area, please park in designated parking places only. Don't park in the county right-of-way or on private property without permission.
Go to florida'sforgottencoast.com/BeachSafety for a complete list of county and beach ordinances and safety rules.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for visiting Florida's Forgotten Coast. Help us keep our beaches as beautiful as they are today for future visitors and residents.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, now back in session. We're going to our planning, zoning, and adjustment board report. Is Ms. Courtney doing this, Mike?
Yes, she is.
Yes, sir, I'm on.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Courtney, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. So last month, I brought two lot configuration applications before you guys, and you guys had some questions. The first one was on 2140 Highway 98 West, and the other one was on 1808 Highway 98 West. I did attach a breakdown from Mark Carrington on both of the properties on September 19th. The Franklin County Board of County Commissioners heard two requests for reconfiguring existing lots of record to create more evenly sized lots. Grandfathering is an allowance for existing lots that do not meet some newly enacted regulation to still be used. For example, when Franklin County enacted a minimum lot size of one acre, there were thousands of already established lots that were less than one acre in size. All of these lots were grandfathered in, so they can still be built upon even though they are not one acre in size. There are two different types, dates for grandfathering lots of record. Ordin79-8 established standards for the installation of septic tanks in Franklin County, including the requirement that a lot must be at least one acre in size. A provision was made to allow variances.
What is this?
May be granted for installations of a lot of record if deed or plat is recorded prior to August 17 of 1978. This is the date the county follows for lots that are not hooked up to a central sewer system. Do you want me to continue reading, or you want me to just go down to where it states the talks about both of the properties?
You can just talk about both of the properties as far as I'm concerned, unless another Commissioner has some that want to be read into the record.
Okay, well, for 1808 Highway 98 West, he stated that this property has three existing lots of record. There is 194 wide lot, 150 wide lot, and 115-foot wide lot, all created prior to 1978. This was originally the property of John and Roberta Berta. It has now passed to their daughters, and they want to split the parcel into two lots that are the same size. So with 1808, they're going from three lots to two lots. They're merging. And then 2140 Highway 98 West, this property has three existing lots of record. There is 111-foot wide lot, 114-foot wide lot, and 150-foot wide lot, all created before 1978. The owner desires to reconfigure the lots, so they are three lots with each having similar frontage on Highway 98. And then he talks about how there were situations in the past where we have approved the reconfiguring of lots, November 17, 2020, and then another one on April 5, 2022.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Bankston? All right. So the first one we're looking at is 2140 Highway 98 West, correct?
Correct.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know. I know this was tabled, and I see all the information. Do we need to maybe wait till Commissioner Amison is back so that we can have a...I mean, he can't make a motion for a second. I don't know what his thoughts are on this. It's just, you know, Commissioner Sanders and I, and I don't want the applicant to not have a full...I know Commissioner Lockley's out, but I don't know if having a full board is going to be detrimental or not having a full board is going to be detrimental to this being voted upon today, in my opinion. I don't know how the rest of you guys feel.
Well, I do know Commissioner Lockley is not here, and Commissioner Amison couldn't be here today. I mean, he is attended by Zoom, but he cannot, according to actions that was taken by the governor of the state, make motions or seconds or vote, attending via Zoom. So, you know, I'm fine with that. Is anybody representing applicant here this morning?
1808 is on Zoom, I believe, and we are here as well.
Okay. Could you please come forward?
I'm Jackie Etheridge with Anchor Realty.
Yes, ma'am.
And Charles Schneider. Mr. Quackenbush, one of the owners, should be on Zoom as well.
Okay. Well, the issue that Commissioner Ward raised is here this morning, so we only have two Commissioners that can make any motion.
Yes, sir.
And she was, you know, I don't know whether it's or not because we haven't had any discussion on it, but she was wanting to, I guess, talk about tabling until the very next meeting so we could have more of a full board here on behalf of these applicants. That is completely, you know, that's just what we're discussing this morning. I just want to make sure you understand why we're discussing it and what we're doing. I don't think it's an attempt to delay you any further, but I do think it's an attempt to make sure you get the best...I don't want to use the word fair, but that the full board is able to actually weigh in on it instead of, you know, this that we have this morning that is a forum, but, you know, it's not a full board.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Quackenbush is on muted in case you needed to ask him any questions.
Yeah, I just, I don't know of any, but I hope this is not somehow messing up any other thing they have going on if we delay it for another two weeks. I guess that's my question.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just, like I said, looking out for the applicant. I don't, I think it's only fair, but if he wants us to do it today, I mean, that's up to him, too. I just feel like I'm with, you know, not a full board. I don't think it's fair for the applicant to not, you know, another couple of weeks. I don't know if there's, if this is time-sensitive or not, and we need to act on this today, but...
That was my only question about time-sensitive. But other than that, I have no question.
Does Mr. Quackenbush have anything to say? Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, he's...Mr. Quackenbush, they're asking, do you have any questions, or how do you feel about delaying it until our next meeting in two weeks from today?
And does he understand why?
For more members to be at the meeting, more Commissioners?
I have no issues with delaying it for a couple of weeks. I would kind of defer to Jackie Etheridge also representing us.
Yes, thank you. We'll wait for two weeks.
So we will, just as a question, because we do have the ability to, we can do these together, or we can do it individually? Do you want to make a motion to table both of them? Is that what you're talking about doing?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I believe it would be prudent to table both. As long as neither one...I know that you guys are representing 2140.
1808.
I'm sorry, 1808. As long as 2140 is not time-sensitive either, and as long as applicant's okay, I think it's only fair to them that we delay, actually to benefit them so that we can have a semi-full board.
It'll just fall in with your normal planning, zoning report as a full planning, zoning report.
So did you make a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table both of these items till our next meeting. Do we have a second? We have a second, like Commissioner Sanders.
See, hence why.
We're down to the...I mean, that's all we got today.
Thank you very much.
So we do have a motion and a second. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's your names.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right. Now, we have a...are we doing a bid opening today, or what are we doing?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I get into my work.
We work, Ms. Aaron, so far she's doing her work during the meeting while she's waiting on us to get to her.
Okay, Commissioners, today we are opening construction bids for your next three dune walkovers to be paid by...this is erosion control measures that are being funded by the Tourist Development Council sales tax proceeds. We are actually replacing the dune walkovers at 8th, 9th, and 10th Street West on St. George Island. This will also include some planting of sea oat vegetation, also some parking stops along the road with parking improvements to prevent forward encroachment onto the dunes. And the dune walkovers, they're actually being replaced by order of worst condition. So most of the dune walkovers over there are about 25 years old.
Yes.
Okay, the first bid is going to be received from MKM Quality Construction of Mexico Beach, Florida. Let's see the amount of that bid. They do have a bid bond. She does have a total base bid for the three dune walkovers, which also includes demolition, the planting, and the parking enhancements of $189,744.69. Again, $189,744.69 is the base bid. There's also some alternate bid items, whereas MRD had actually did a couple of design improvements to the existing dune walkovers that we replaced last year, so this would be Third and Seventh. He made some modifications with the top rails. So the alternate bid item for her is $4,355. Again, alternate amount, $4,355. And that's for MKM Quality Construction of Mexico Beach. This next one is from Scruggs Construction LLC in Alligator Point. Bid bond is included. And the total base bid is $224,701.52. Again, $224,701.52. The alternate bid item for Scruggs Construction is $6,949. Again, the alternate bid is $6,949. This next one is Michael L. Anderson Incorporated from Lynnhaven, Florida. And we do have, make sure there's a bid bond here. Yes, bid bond is included. Total base bid, $324,856.80. Again, $324,856.80. The alternate bid items...I do believe he did that wrong. Let me add this real quick. Alternate bid items, $3,685.
Ms. Aaron, are all these alternates the same?
It is.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yep, and this is the cost for all three of them as well, so we did not bid them out separately. This next quote is from, let's see, this is Hydra Construction and Engineering LLC from Crawfordville. Okay, bid bond is included. Total base bid, $667,250. And the alternate bids are $6,700. Again, $6,700 for the alternate bid items.
I know wood's been expensive, but anyway.
Special wood.
Okay. Next bid is North Florida Construction from Clarksville. Bid bond is included. Total base bid, $356,070. The alternate bid items were $13,400. Again, $13,400 for the alternate bid, and that's for North Florida Construction. And our last one is HG Harters &amp; Son from Panama City. Okay, the bid bond is included. Total base bid, $510,577. $510,577 with alternate bid items totaling $7,872.50. Alternate bid, $7,872.50.
I make a motion that would turn this favor to whoever's special bid.
It will go to MRD and Associates, Mike Dabrowski. Yep, so he will review.
I make a motion to turn it over to MRD with the recommendation.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve, turn it over to the review committee from MRD and Associates, by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's your names. Thank you, Ms. Aaron. Appreciate it. All right, and you are up next.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, first item on my report. The county advised by nondiscriminatory policies and procedures for state and federal grants require the acknowledgement and documentation of these practices at a minimum of every three years. The previous acknowledgement and policy were last signed in February of 2021. The updated documents include a mandated data collection disclosure and will bring the county policy into compliance with the new rules from the United States Treasury. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the updated Title VI and Nondiscrimination Policy and Plan.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's three unenemies.
Okay, next item, Commissioners, is item number two. The $1.97 million FDOT CR-67 Phase II grant includes the design CEI to widen and resurface approximately 1.29 miles of CR-67 from the Crooked Creek Bridge to SFR 166. The county first advertised for the construction bids in December, and unfortunately, the low bid was almost $500,000 over the approved grant award. FDOT was unable to come up with the additional funds for the project and would not allow for the project length to be reduced without a full re-advertising with engineer's bid alternates. FDOT would also not allow for a secondary grant application for the funding deficiency so long as the existing grant was open. Board action to approve advertising for construction bids for the CR-67 Phase II widening and resurfacing project.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion?
Yes. That ain't, that's not Crooked Creek, that is Crooked River.
Okay.
But it's the Jim Odom Bridge.
Okay.
It has a name.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
If you don't put that Jim Odom Bridge on there, somebody's going to get you.
Yeah, 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 actually, we noticed that, too, because we were like, Crooked Creek, I think I got that wrong.
Well, I always call it Pine Lodge.
Yeah.
But we got two or three Pine Lodges in my county. So, it's sort of like C-30.
Yeah. So this is, looking like this project's one and a quarter miles is going to be 1.9 million?
That's correct.
Okay, just make sure I regret.
Yep.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I waited for Commissioner Ever since to jump in, because you know how he is about construction and cost, but yeah.
Yep, and that's one reason, too. FDOT, a lot of the grant projects, the bids are coming in so high, they just do not have any more money to throw at some of these projects that are currently out to bid, so it's a sign of the times.
One thing, I hope they go along and do the widening of the road, and they're all the way from the bridge to the county line when they eventually get the Phase III that we're going to do, because this is an area that lock trucks use. And I was very disappointed that they shortened it up when they did the other part of the project, the year before last. The original Phase I.
Yeah, I remember you asking me about that.
Yeah, I was upset because that's what we needed it for, was the traffic.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's your names.
Okay, Commissioners, next item is item number three. C-30 Gulf Avenue in Carabel is the last outstanding Hurricane Michael recovery project. The repairs on this road have been delayed due to the discrepancies with the FEMA project reports as the GPS coordinates were duplicated in the FEMA system post-disaster. There are sections of C-30 in Carabel and also to the west of Apollachicola, which was a separate damage description. In addition to the GPS coordinates, some project quantities were also replicated between the two project sites. The county will need the hard construction numbers to be able to get the corrections and modifications approved through FEMA and the project awarded. Board action to approve advertising for construction bids for the FEMA repairs of C-30 Gulf Avenue.
That may.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's your names.
Commissioners, next item four. At the August 15 meeting, the board opened bids for the metal batting cage roof structure at Brumman Park. Only one bid was received, and that bid was $31,701, which was over 50% more than the amount that had been budgeted in the DEO Hurricane Michael Assistance Grant. Commissioner Ward had also reached out to Hatfield Pole Barns for a quote, but did not receive a response. Just yesterday, I received a quote response from Keane's Portable Buildings for the fabrication and installation of the metal pole barn roof structure for $18,019.84. In accordance with the county bid policy, for purchases over $10,000 and up to $25,000, three solicitation requests and a minimum of two responses are required if it is determined that more vendors are not available. As the county has gone through the full advertisement procedure and later two requests for direct solicitation, this should satisfy the requirements of the county bid policy for fair and inclusive. for fair and open competition at that purchase price. Board action to authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Keane's Portable Buildings in the amount of $18,019.84 for the metal pole barn roof over structure at Brumman Park.
So move with a question.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Erin, just for, on the record, Mr. Hatfield did, I contacted him, and he did say he emailed me a quote. I know we've been having some issues with our email server. I don't know if that's probably an issue. I just, he was supposed to resend it, of course, did not get it. I just texted him during the break and have not received any reply. But this, you said $18,000, that includes putting it up or doing?
It does.
Okay, so that's the building and putting it up?
Building and installation.
Okay, thank you.
You want me to second?
If you would.
See, that's nice for y'all. No, I'm teasing, I'm teasing, really. I'd do that for her. Second.
All right, and we do have a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion for your vote? Commissioner Ward, I would tell you that, I don't wanna make it public, but I would like to tell you later I can give you some information about Mr. Hatfield, that maybe she could light on some of what you're looking at.
Okay.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next item. Attached are three resolutions for the adoption of unanticipated revenue as part of end-of-the-year fiscal year bookkeeping. These funds were not included in your original adopted '22, '23 budget because at the time of budget adoption, they were unanticipated. Florida Statute 129 allows the county 60 days after the end of a fiscal year to incorporate unanticipated revenues into the prior year's budget. As grant invoices are processed for work completed through September 30th, resolutions and amendments will be part of my report through the end of November. The first resolution is for $1,035,69 in federal grant funds received through the Florida Department of Transportation for the Alligator Drive Multi-Use Path Phases III and IV. The second resolution is for $672,382 in state grant funds received from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for the Hurricane Michael Assistance Grant. And the third resolution is for $137,737 in state grant funds received from the State Fire Marshal's Office for the installation of a sprinkler system at the armory. Board action to adopt the three attached budget resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, can we adopt all these in one same motion, or do we need to do it separately?
Either as one.
Oh, yeah, okay.
This is the same subject matter.
They may.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next item number six. At the last meeting, the pillar to post inspection report for 248 Highway 98 East Point report was provided to the board. Repair quotes have since been received from Kate's Electric and Gunn HVAC to address the mechanical issues noted in the inspection report. Attached to my report are the two repair estimates. Kate's electrical estimate totals $11,140, and the Gunn report includes repair estimates and full replacement cost estimates for the components. Gunn does recommend full replacement of the oldest air conditioning unit as it is likely at the end of useful life. And the appraisal reports have not yet been received. Now, that was as of the date of my report, but I believe Attorney Schuler actually has an update on his report as far as that's concerned.
Now, I've been checking my emails. I don't have any written reports yet.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay. Okay, and then also, my next item is the American Rescue Plan Project Status and Spending Plan Update, also just an informational item for you all. The total draft spending plan for the $2.351 million that was received. We do have several of the tasks complete. And approximately 50% of the architectural engineering and bid specification work has been completed to date for the courthouse roof replacement and structural sealant project. And the advertisement for construction bid and specs will be available for the beach parking improvements project next week. I just wanted to provide you guys some status updates.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Erin?
And the federal government, thankfully, we avoided the government shutdown for, I believe, about 45 more days. But that was something that we were all kind of holding our breath on because that would actually pause all of our restore projects and also our USDA grant applications and also the USDA acquisition project with the East Point Library. So just, so thankfully, we have 45 more days to get things done.
Ms. Erin, I do have a question before we proceed. Have you heard back from our CBG, I guess, vendor, the people that are doing the contract for us, about any movement on that program? I know that we finally received the monies, but we haven't heard anything back. And the only reason I'm asking is because it was last November when the governor said we were getting the money.
It was.
And still, nobody has received anything yet. So do you have any updates at all?
I do. They are actually going through, doing the, kinda like, the final process before they actually get going with, they've already advertised for the mobile home replacement and then also the construction activities. Right now, they're just going through the title work, making sure everyone has clear title, and then also some of the environmental requirements before they're actually able to move forward with construction.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions from Ms. Murphy? You're off the hook. Mr. Moron?
Off the hook, I think.
Now, you're on with it.
I guess so.
Well, you've got your report mostly done at this point.
Good.
Most of it.
Pretty cool. Page 19, item one, it's done every year. Once the county budget is approved, the Department of Health submits their core contracts for approval. There are a few changes to the contract, and Sarah is online and unmuted to address some of those changes in case you guys have any questions. Once completed, we'll need a motion to approve this core contract. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning, Michael. Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Not sure if you can see me, but I'm glad you can hear me. Just the quick changes in the core contract. It's just areas that we've added on so that everyone is aware. But our goal is always to fill all areas of our buildings with organizations that can provide services to the community. And in our satellite clinic in Carabel, PanCare, as you know, operates on one side of the building, and they use that section to provide needed dental services for our residents. So in partnership, they gave us a little bit of money, and that was the first add-on to the core contract. Obviously, it's not much, but we do use it to help pay our utilities, or we can put it towards maintenance or repairs or renovations. So it's a breakdown by square footage, and they pay for approximately 50% of that total area.
Anyone else have any questions for Ms. Sarah? All right, and what is the pleasure of the board?
They may.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Ms. Erin.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number two, Commissioners. The start of the next legislative session is upon us. Both Representative Schoff and Senator Simon's staff have requested the county's legislative funding appropriation forms. That's what's done last year. Staff is recommending the engagement of Ms. Tracy Bosby of the Management Experts LLC to assist with the completion of those requests, those forms. Last year, with the combined efforts of Ms. Bosby and the county lobbyists, the county received most of the requested appropriations. And in one case, Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, more than what we asked for was given to the county.
Oh, yes.
Okay. If approved this morning, Ms. Bosby will work from the list of requests that the board presented at the county legislative delegation on September 27th. Ms. Bosby will present these request forms at your October 17th meeting for final review and approval, as they are due in the respective legislative offices in early November. Please do not hesitate to contact Ms. Bosby prior to the 17th meeting to discuss any ideas or concerns you have regarding these appropriation requests. Board action to engage the Management Experts LLC to assist with the completion of the legislative appropriation requests.
Mr. Moron, I'm fine with us proceeding with this, but I do wanna ask a question. Have you had any discussion with any of the Commissioners since the legislative delegation? Or is there anything that they wanna add that wasn't discussed?
I have not as yet. I've been seeing what direction we go this morning. And to bring that up, that was the point. If there are other appropriations that were not discussed, Commissioners, at the delegation, I would recommend you just contact Ms. Bosby, and she will contact Erin and myself, and we'll work it out for you.
She did a good job. She did a good job.
Yes, and very, very responsive, Commissioner Sanders, she really is.
Yep, not a long time. So move.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, recently, as most of you may know, there was a vandalism incident at the Buddy Ward Park bathroom. By recent, I mean within the last, I think, month or a little longer. As we were reviewing the museum security cameras, it was discovered that the recorder may have suffered some damage from a lightning strike. Therefore, there was no information to review. A new security recorder that will be monitored as part of the access control system. Let me pause there. Right now, there are two separate systems. You have the TV system, and you have the access control where you put in the code. What I'm asking for, I brought in the security access control gentleman. He has a DVR that will tie into the system. So when myself, Fonda, or John, when we pull up the security system, we can then log into the cameras directly, which is like a dream. So I'm asking the board to approve purchasing that and installing that DVR under $10 monthly monitoring fee that allows us to view it online.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So the monitoring fee is not them monitoring, it's you guys or staff monitoring?
Yes, staff, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve this with a comment.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. By Commissioner Ward.
We can do a second, but I don't wanna hear what a comment is, sir.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Sanders. Please proceed.
So, you know, this is becoming a constant issue, and I know we've, I've asked for cameras at Brumman, I've asked for cameras everywhere. We need to hold these people accountable. I mean, this is ridiculous. It's costing our taxpayer dollars to fix these things. These, whoever's doing this, we need to hold them accountable and make them pay for the damages.
Definitely.
So I'm all about cameras everywhere and every park. I mean, I know that's money that we're having to spend, but we're having to spend the money to fix it. And I guarantee you that this $17.35 and $10 monthly fee is way more than what damage they've done. It just aggravates me and makes me livid to see and know that we try to provide things for our people to enjoy, and they abuse it. It just, it really, really irks me, and I'm very passionate about it. And I want the, whoever's doing this, I want them to get caught. I don't know if it's the same people doing them on all parks, or if they're just kids that ain't got nothing else better to do. I don't wanna speculate, but let's catch them and then hold them accountable.
And just to add more to it, I would love to see if we could tie it into the Sheriff's Department. At the time they breaking in, let the Sheriff's Department go out there.
Is there alarm systems?
Is there a way that you could do that?
Well, yeah, there's an access system that's there. So I can hopefully get the DVR that if it's secured and somebody triggers one of the internal motions in the door, it will take the picture, it will show them on video, and the Sheriff's Department will be notified at the same time. That's why I'm trying to tie it in as one unit, Commissioners.
You need to get it tied in to where the Sheriff's Department can be out there like that and catch those folks that's doing that mess.
And if not, we could pull that recording down and just...
Yeah, I know, and I have to say, the lightning hit my security system and knocked it all out too, so I'm gonna have to get me a new DVR and all that.
I'll give you Stone's number.
And, I don't know, is there a way? I guess we obviously didn't know that lightning had hit and suffered some damage. I don't know if there's a way we can ensure that doesn't happen in the future, because we obviously get a lot of lightning storms and that happens.
Yeah, so we'll try and put an arrest there, like, a better protection for it. But you're absolutely right, Commissioner. The problem was, because the way that DVR was like a standalone thing with no monitor, we didn't know that it was recording. The lights are on, but it just wasn't recording. So this way, we will know right away, because it'll send us a signal, something's wrong.
Okay.
Ms. Moron, I have a couple of questions.
Sir?
Number one, is this, is this system gonna be motion activated?
Yes.
So it's not recording all the time, it's recording?
Oh, no, the cameras will probably be recording all the time, because we're gonna put in a bigger recording.
Who can monitor that?
Well, what we'll do, again, we'll tie it into the system so that the access system will trigger something, and we go back and look for that exact recording at that time.
Right, well, I guess the question I'm asking is, having tried to do something like that before, because we had those kind of monitors at the job where I worked.
Uh-huh.
If it's recording all the time, and you go back and trying to find something that's not motion activated, then you have to sit there and literally fast-forward through or play through hours of footage to see two minutes.
You do.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, you do. That is doubtful, but let me say this. In my experience dealing with security for quite a few years, I would prefer the search than the motion failing and not triggering the cameras.
Okay.
Yeah, I personally, you know, with my experience, I just do.
I understand what you're saying, and I'm fine with that. The only other question I have, and we have had several discussions about cameras in several different places around the county, like the Commissioners are talking about. And I agree with them, because it's not been, three months ago, we had to shut down the restroom at the East Point Fishing Pier because somebody went in and kicked all the stall doors down.
Yeah.
Just kicking them off the walls.
For no reason.
For no apparent reason. So my only concern is going forward, as we're having these kinds of discussions, and I'm not trying to do anything that's illegal, do we have to state where we're putting cameras? Is there another way to address this so that?
The public doesn't know where the cameras are.
That's a valid, because at the end of the day, what if they go and take the camera down or shoot the camera out, or then what you gonna do?
The good thing with this system and this camera, it not only, and I'll double-check with Stone, is that we can have it directly up, because there's internet in that area, and there's internet in the building. I'm gonna try to also have a cloud storage. So even if you take the camera, somehow you took away the DVR, you know, we still have somewhere to go back and look for that data.
Well, and with the technology, cameras aren't no longer this big either.
Yeah.
They can be the size of a quarter.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think, and Attorney Schuler might can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think as long as you have something stating that this area is under surveillance, then that covers us legally. Obviously, we're not trying to record in a bathroom or some private area, which would be obviously illegal and unethical. But I think that's, they don't need to know where they're at. They just say, hey, this is being recorded. Yes, they may can see a camera, but as Chairman Jones stated, if you get one small enough, they might not be aware.
Well, keep in mind, part of the purpose of stating that a public area is under audio and video surveillance is to be prophylactic and prevent people from...
Yes.
So they know they're being watched, so therefore, they don't want their, but then they put hats on and hoodies on, and you can't see their face anyway, so...
So, one more question just before we vote. Does this area already have signage stating that there is cameras?
I don't know. I'll double-check. I don't think so.
If not, it needs to be added.
I need to, as she said that, I was thinking about it, yeah.
So, do I need to amend my motion to reflect putting up signage, or is that just kind of a given?
No, I'm just gonna add.
I think that would be included, yeah.
All right, any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I get the question.
Yes, sir.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, it's hard to jump in, but just for clarification, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Would this bring all of the parks online? I mean, on the same system? Or are we still gonna have, you know, this with this one company, this with the other collective? I'm under the impression that's what we have right now, correct?
Yes, you're correct, sir, and it's a slow, slow transition, but that's what I'm trying to do, get everything under one umbrella. And, you know, and we have, like Commissioner Ward said, we still have some parks that don't have any cameras at all, and we're moving towards that, you know, and we were, I was kinda waiting till the new budget year where we have some money to go after to get some of these camera systems, to get camera systems in some of these other parks.
I understand. I just, I was just trying to get my own mind.
Yeah, so basically, yes, I wanna be able to look at, on my phone and tap in, you know, and look at any park, Fonda, myself, look at any park that we need to add that money in case somebody calls and say, hey, something's going on, you know, or the sheriff has called up.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion before we vote?
Did we get a second?
Thought we did.
Yes, we did.
Commissioners, Sanders, second.
She's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, next page, page 20, we can skip straight to number seven, more cameras.
Cameras.
More cameras. But Commissioner Ward, I think it'll be better if you update the board or your discussions with FWC, and then from there, we could take on the rest of what we wanna do at the current location right now.
So, as you guys know, at last meeting, I'm trying to get the shooting range at the Humane Society relocated. So I talked to Mr. Klein, the FWC shooting range recreational guy in charge. And in order for us to be able to do it through FWC, it's gonna, in my opinion, personally, think it's gonna take a little bit too much, because they're wanting $400,000. They have to have that requirement, which we don't have. They can still do the range. I think the initial issue was, they, we had the money, but we didn't have the property. Now, it's kinda the other way around. Now, it's kind of the other way around. It's going to cost $400,000 for them to do a range. Now, granted, we can get grants, and the county would have to come up with $100,000, which, again, that's money we don't have or don't want to spend. In addition to that, they would want it manned, and we don't have the capability to man a shooting range, you know, for the amount of time it's open. So my suggestion, and Michael and Michael Morone and Aaron and I discussed this, was potentially, and there is someone that is going to, I don't want to really go into too much detail, but there is someone that is going to potentially donate a nice amount of money to be able to facilitate the relocation of this gun range. So I, in my opinion, I feel like that it would be in our best interest and for the interest of the people, our citizens that we serve, to get some of our county-owned property, potentially, we looked at some of the property that's located behind the road department, it's in the woods, to just make a gun range basically comparable to what they have now, which is basically a berm with some picnic tables for them to be able to shoot. Now, over here at the Appalachia Cola Range, if memory serves, they have a berm. I think they have some plywood things where they could like staple or tape a target to. A pole barn roof covering with a table, so someone maybe could sight in a rifle or put their ammunition on, what have you. So I feel like something as simple as that would be more beneficial and more conducive than the FWC route. That's just my opinion. Because let's face it, all people want to do is go target practice. They want to, hunt season comes around, they want to go make sure the rifles are sighted in with their scopes. Basically, they're out there right now shooting TVs and all these things. So I feel like it would be better for us to just give them basically what they already have. Just make it a little bit further away from our department, so the Humane Society, the landfill. I know this is behind the road department, but again, it's behind, and it's not going to interfere with any of, anybody or pose a safety issue in that aspect.
Is that gonna, are we gonna have an issue with FWC or any other agency to just put up a shooting range somewhere? Is there some kind of permit we have to go through or something we have to do?
I don't think so, because what do we have now with what they currently have at the...
What we have now is been there.
Yeah.
If you're putting something new, I just want to make sure we don't have a problem.
Yeah.
We could check, but I don't think so.
If we're putting something new, well, that's, I guess, what I don't want to run against.
Yeah.
We're doing it and we think we're moving in a good direction, and then all of a sudden, it's like, you guys can't do that.
Yeah, that's true. That's a good point.
That's all I'm trying to find out.
I'll double check. They didn't give us that impression that if we're not using their funds or state land.
Doesn't matter.
We pretty just, yeah.
In addition to that, and the cameras and the signage, again, we have people that are supposedly, from what I've been told now, I haven't witnessed this myself, abusing alcohol out there, and guns and alcohol, as we know, don't mix. They're shooting up TVs, trash cans. I had somebody say, well, can we get the picnic tables replaced? Well, I'm not going to replace a picnic table for someone just to go shoot it up, because literally, the picnic table has bullet holes riddled all throughout. And I mean, I'm not going to pay for a picnic table. Somebody just go, just, again, the vandalism at our parks, at our whatever. So I feel like if we, if we maybe, for one, we don't know how often the shooting range is being utilized. Now, I actually went out there yesterday and it was being utilized. And it was like a rapid fire, it sounded like it was multiple people. So it is being used, just don't know how much. In addition to the cameras, I would like to be able to, for one, know how many people are using it and how often it's being utilized. But also, I want to see if someone's out there shooting up a TV, or, you know, there's a liquor bottle out there and they're abusing alcohol. I want to know that too. I don't want to, you know, I know people are, that's my private rights, it's, you know, I can drink if I want and shoot if I want. I don't want to impede on that either, but I feel like it's important if we, if we maybe look at that and see, you know, who's shooting up a TV and just, I don't know, I don't know. What are y'all's thoughts?
Well, I agree with what you're saying. So I think that one of the issues we have, just one of the issues we have, is if, even at the current range, even if I'm fine with moving it, if we can move it, I'm good with that. I wasn't trying to shut that down. But even if we do move it, if we're going to have any kind of standard of practice or rules to abide by at the shooting range, I think we have to do it in the form of an ordinance. You know, no alcohol allowed, you know what I mean? There might even be, in our current situation, I know that it's going to be great during hunting season. When it's not hunting season, we want one to move to go to where the shooting range is only open when the other structure is closed. That's after four o'clock in the afternoon. I mean, that's a possibility, but obviously during hunting season, it's going to be used more than that. But I'm fine with doing that. I just think that's some of the proactive steps we're going to have to take to ensure that there's a standard of practice at the shooting range, wherever it might be located. I'm good with that. I will say, taking it one step further, and I don't know what, how they're going to be. I was talking to Mr. Doug Jimmerson last night, which is the current Chair of the Board for the Humane Society. And, you know, he said if we'd had this conversation a year ago, it'd be completely different, because they've started putting monies into the building they have now. And I talked to him about relocating the Humane Society. And, but he did say, before I hung up, that he was at least going to present that to his board on October 19th and see what they thought about it. Because what we have now that we didn't have a year ago is we're about to have possession of the East Point Library property, which is about 13 acres. So it might be an opportunity to relocate the Humane Society if we build a suit. But again, they haven't weighed in on that. I just want to make sure the board's aware of that conversation, because at the end of the day, we just want people to feel safe, especially those that are in that area. I mean, there's a lot of things there. There's our landfill, there, you know, and animal control is right there, located by the Humane Society. The sheriff's office is right there. So there's a lot going on for guns to be getting fired off, you know. And again, it's not against anybody using their gun or whatever, but I do agree with what the Commissioners brought up. You know, maybe we need to have a set, a state of rules at the gun range. You can do this, but you can't do this, you know, doing it in the own town, doing it in another spot, you can't do it here, so.
And that was, Mr. Chairman, that was, you know, also in the report too, and I'm in agreement with that. So if we need to do an ordinance, then maybe we need to, is that something that we would need to do for people? Because my thing is this too, FWC was wanting to charge people to be able to maintain it, and that was the thing. Well, you could use the money to charge for the people coming in to pay for the person manning it. But I think that's why people come to this range, is because here in the City of Appalachia, you have to pay to utilize that range. And people don't want to have to go pay to shoot a gun. I mean, I know some people do, but sometimes our citizens don't want to have to do that. So that's why, another reason why I didn't really want to go that route. Because I don't want to have, if I want to go shoot my gun, I don't really, if I want to shoot it bad enough, I would pay a fee. But some of our people don't want to do that, and I totally understand that.
Well, I think you'll find over time that Commissioner, some of it, not all of it, but some of it's because they want to be doing some of the things they're already doing too.
This is true. This is very true.
You know, so, but I will say, and this is not meant to be the way it might sound. I still don't agree that they should be charging the amount they're charging at that Appalachia range, being that county equipment built it, and I'll leave that alone. It should be more accessible to the public. We built it, they did not.
Mr. Chairman, to answer the question, if the board's desire and your policy is to adopt a set of enforceable rules with consequences, it would have to be done by ordinance.
Yes.
Well, why don't we go ahead and proceed with that then?
Yes, I was like, basically, what I'm asking for, based on the discussion now, is basically a motion that, two things. One, that would allow me to go out and get a proposal for cameras out there. And the second would be to start the process of public hearings needed to create an ordinance for rules and regulations at the shooting range. Because Commissioners, even if you build another one, there's nothing wrong with moving the cameras and your rules to the other one, so it'll follow it.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, that is interesting, because I've spoken to Mr. Jimmerson as well, and I've also talked to the Humane Society. I guess she's the director or what have, I don't remember her term, her title is, Ms. Karen, but...
I'm sorry, you all smell something burning? No? Just me?
He said he does.
That wasn't...
Something burning?
Yeah, to me, I just, I'm gonna...
It does smell electrical.
Yeah, I'm going to get a deputy to check that for a second.
Yeah, I don't know about that. I don't smell it, but post-COVID, I don't smell a whole lot of stuff anymore.
The fire alarm going off. Remember our fire alarm?
Oh, no. I know what, lady, I know what it is. The guy's working on the AC system, and it could be him charging it up. I'm sorry. It just takes a while.
Do you want to go make sure?
Yeah, I want to make sure anyway. I'm sorry, I can't...
You got Evan, he done left the building. I am not getting burned up in Franklin County.
Since I can't, since I couldn't, oh, I just had somebody pull the fire alarm.
Really? Thank you, sir.
Out. Mr. Chairman, continuing the discussion.
I smell it now.
One of your staff members, county employee, was part of a discussion involving the potential gun range and this whole rules issued. And he had a good suggestion. The people shooting up TVs and other things that are inappropriate. His suggestion basically was, I don't know how the board feels about this, if you were to basically move the parking further away from the shooting area, because, and I think he's right, people are not going to grab a great big heavy TV and lug it a couple of hundred yards.
Well, I...
But do you want the public to have to walk a couple of hundred, you know, park a, you know, a significant distance away from the range? I mean, I think he had a great idea, but...
Well, I do agree with that. I don't think anybody should be able to drive on the range.
Well, right now, I'm just, many, many, many years since I was there, but basically, you can park here and you walk toward the, you know, the bailiff sits, and you're at the range and you're ready to shoot, apparently shoot picnic tables. Why do they do that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, and I'm okay with that, but who's to say the TV's not already there currently, that somebody else? And I see your point, but then again, you know, I don't want to eliminate or do anything for our handicap accessible people or people with mobility issues that may have a problem with walking a long distance. That's my only concern with that.
Okay. Like I said, I think it's a good idea, it was someone else's idea, but I just thought I would see how the policymakers thought about it. But you are, you are correct with the handicap issue. I have not really thought about that, but, I mean, put in handicap masks and they can... I mean, that's what we do at the beach.
Yeah, that's right.
So do we need two separate motions here, potentially?
I thought, I mean, at this point, I would rather take, instead of sketching the public hearing on a fast track, I would consider the board's action to authorize me and Mr. Morone to gather information on rules and regulations, bring it back, let the board look at it, kind of like we're going to do with the Stormwater Management Plan sort of here in a few minutes. The board previews it before we go to a public hearing.
All right, well, before we proceed, Commissioner Amerson, Commissioner Sanders, since y'all are both avid hunters, would y'all please weigh in on this?
I'm just letting Ms., I mean Commissioner Ward say what she wanted to say. I believe it's her district, and I want her to say what she needs to say.
But I, I mean, I like input, so what's your thoughts?
No, I don't have to.
Commissioner Sanders, do you use that range to...
Would I use it?
Yeah.
I don't have to. I know how to shoot a gun.
Ooh, okay.
I knew that was...
I'm going to ask that question again.
Well, and it's in takes help.
What about you, Commissioner Amerson? Any thoughts?
I could, I could catch bits and pieces of it, Chairman Jones, but, yeah, I mean, there needs to, there needs to be something done. But the thing about it is, is if you have accountability, like if you have like a small fee, we could take that money. By my mind, it's just racing with it, but you could, you know, set it up to where we can put that money back into the range and maintain it. You know, and another thing too, with a small fee, and I'm not talking about anything like we pay over in Appalachia Cola, but just something small, that'll keep people accountable. There's a lot of possibilities where we could do this. I'm interested in it. I'd like to, I'd like to roll it around in my brain a little bit and then come back and go with some ideas, if that's all right with y'all.
Yep.
That looks like it's the way it's headed anyway.
Yeah.
I just, quite frankly, me, I wouldn't use it.
Yeah.
The only time, you know, anybody I know that uses the range is just to try to sight in a gun or the rifle before. But is it going to be where you can use all kinds of weapons?
Well, yeah, that's what it is now. I think everybody goes out there and shoots pistols, shotguns, rifles.
Too bad that we can't get it in the way the FWC plan three years ago, and they did follow through with it. Shut up, Cheryl. Well, it's true.
It is true. It is true.
I mean, we had the whole thing going to be paid for by the FWC. All of a sudden, FWC don't want to do it.
Another move at the Pendleton City. I went and looked at that one. It's a really nice range. Let me ask you, Commissioner Ward, because you were the ones that met, you're the one that met with them. And again, it might be something we would have to try to do. If we did come up with the money, what kind of range are they talking about building?
Massive.
Man.
I don't know how to describe it. The plans that we, that were originally, they would go with the original plans, and I can send you the email.
I've seen this plan. The one that Mr. Grayson had, Shepherd?
I don't know if he, I'm not recalling that, but it was the one that Mr. Klein had, or, yeah, Mr. Klein had originally sent the Commissioners when they were first initially talking about this.
Yeah.
Back in 2013?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's the plan that they had, back then, to have it up on the six...
Yeah.
And that would be the same.
Yes.
Now, the cost he gave me was $400,000. I think that was the same cost back then.
Yeah.
And granted, like I said, you know, with federal, some of the federal grants we could get, we would only have to come up with $100,000. But again, that's money that we would have to come up with, that we, and of course, we could use inmate labor to clear off the property. But again, I just think that, I don't know, I think it's, they would want it manned, they would charge a fee. It's big, they would need more acreage than what...
The one they have in Pendleton City, they actually manned it.
The FWC?
Yep.
I didn't get that impression.
Yeah, he got, I gave, he gave us an impression...
They have a little store on site.
Yeah, he gave us an impression it's a contracted-like situation.
And it might be there too, but they actually, there was just not a county employee.
Yeah, he gave us that, yeah, it's a contracted employee, not necessarily the FWC employee either. But Commissioner Ward...
It's operated by the Wildlife Foundation, charge a fee, contract employees, $200,000 a year for staff, the cleanup, maintenance, which they said we could still use the inmate labor, but it's $200,000 a year that...
The problem is, is with the maintenance, what did he say? Was the minimum population they recommend?
It's 150,000 people that live within a 30-minute drive.
He said that's the only way it'll work if you have that many people. That's their estimate, so that, that kind of went the downer on that deal.
And it might would have been the same originally from the 2013 deal, because I know that one they put at Pendleton City Beach area, actually. And I've talked about it before, it's, it's got a place like the Commissioner was describing that the Appalachia one has, where you're kind of under a shelter, and there's a pistol range, there are archery ranges, there's rifle ranges, you know what I mean? There's any assortment of stuff there.
And that's what this one would be. It would be all separated out.
Yeah.
But honestly, I think people just want to be able to go have a place where they can go target practice and shoot their guns, their pistols, and sight in a rifle for hunt season. I mean, that's, me personally, I feel like that's all that they use it for.
Sounds good, as long as they're not going to slow us down and keep us from doing it is my only concern.
That would be a good thing to do though, is ask. I don't think it would be an issue, but... So I guess what we need to do is make a motion to proceed with the cameras and to potentially...
Well, from the discussion, my note says, get information about gun range rules and come back to the board.
Okay, all right. Good enough for me?
So have we already, we've not already had a motion second, have we?
I don't have any motion or second. I would just do the cameras. I mean, I understand clearly, Mike, and I can work to bring back information to the board, but the only action he really needs now is on the cameras, so...
Well...
Is it board action or just direction?
Yeah, what I'm looking for right now is direction. Can I go ahead and get a bid? I'm not going to...
Oh, you're not buying it now?
No, I'm not going to buy it. I'll do exactly what you're doing, bring that one big package back to the board.
Cool.
Camera quote and end rules and regs for the...
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All right, so let me see. Any more cameras, Michael? No. Okay, so, page 21, I think we can go straight to item number nine. The county has advertised vacant advisory board seats, your LTPT, your Airport Operations Economic Development Board, the Byway Management Authority, and Regional Rural Transportation Plan. the biway management authority, and regional rural transportation plan technical advisory committee. We've done that now, it's been over a month, probably close to two months. I've received at least one letter of intent, in some cases two, for each seat except for LTPT. So can I go ahead and start a selection process to the three other boards with the exception of the LTPT? And you just, I'll just keep running that one until somebody buys, basically, if you're good with it, and bring you back those recommendations at the next meeting for your approval. That works for you guys?
Sounds good. I will say, Michael, Mr. Moron, I do have somebody I've been talking to about LTPT that actually used to be employed by an internet provider. They're just trying to make sure they're going to have the time before they say yes. So there's an ongoing discussion.
Yes.
And I'll possibly know by the end of this week.
The good deal would be for them to talk to Courtney. She can give them a heads up as to how many, how often they'll meet and stuff like that. But okay, so I'll take as direction, and the action will be at the next meeting when I bring these names for these seats. Hey, item number 10. Guess what? County logo. You guys authorized that a long time ago? I have a final draft. Do I need to bring it up for anybody?
Yes, just so the public can look at it, please.
We have a final draft for approval. Let's see. If I click that, click that. If I remember how to do this. There's no sound. There's no video. Click there.
We'll officially find out how technological it's having yours.
You tell me, sir. If we run choose them. Oh, there we go. I messed up. Okay, let's do this again. That's the commissioner. You just jinxed me.
What was it made?
How about that?
Only one way to skin a cat. See you cheating over there with your screen mirror.
Yes. It took a while, and I am going to give praises where they're due. Chairman Jones, we had got to a certain point with ARPC, and then we kind of wanted to do a little bit more tweaking to it. I could just say that, but we wanted tweaking. Chairman Jones, believe it or not, found a local person that did the final tweak at no charge, because most of the work was done. And Chairman Jones, do you want to tell them? They probably won't believe who it is, but I'll let you tell them, tell everyone.
Your daughter?
Yep. No, Mr. Donnie gave the focus. Actually, he wanted to help out with it, and he said that he refused to give the county a bill for it.
Yes.
Thank you to him.
Because his work was done completely free of charge.
Yes.
He said he was happy to do it. I thought he was going to, I'd never seen him get that excited. I thought he was going to, you know, when I started talking to him and told him that we really wanted to add crimson to it, since that is a school color, the county, you know, get on the same page. He said, you know what? He said, I was going to suggest that, but I'm glad you did, because he said, I've been thinking that for a long time. Because that's what he does for a living, this part-time profession.
Didn't know that, but I'm glad.
This kind of stuff, so.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing is, shouldn't there be a comma after Franklin County? Not that I'm being nitpicky or I just want to be grammatically correct.
Do you put it in seal?
We could. Unless that's the clerk.
Well, well, Mr. Chairman, it was the clerk that kind of made us want to do this, because we were jealous, a little jealous. Just a tiny bit.
But Commissioner Ward, they don't have no common states seal. See what I'm saying? I think it looks good like that. And I love the idea of we're still doing the shrimp boat.
And the oysters.
There is a comma after like, I had the seal and I have Franklin County, Florida, in the, inside the seal. There is a comma after that, but yours is a little bit different.
So we'll ask Donnie. I'm sure he'll be able to. Now, know that if you guys accept this today without any further changes besides the comma, this will be on your vehicles. It will be on the shirts that you order when you travel to the, well, for whoever goes to conferences. I'm just kidding with your.
She said she wasn't going no more now. She already said it.
I'm kidding with you and Commissioner Amerson. I'm kidding with you too. I'm just kidding. That doesn't mean you can't get a shirt, Commissioner. So it'll be on shirts, and then your departments will do the same thing, because a lot of your field departments, they wear the seal on their clothing also, so. Yeah, I like this. And Mr. Chairman, it will be TDC. Tell me what they're waiting, they were waiting for this also because.
Because we're wanting to redo our signs where you enter the county.
Welcome to Franklin County.
Yes, because they're, currently, they're about the same size as a speed limit sign, and I'll leave that alone. But they've been waiting with this to do, because we want to do it all together. You know what I mean? We don't want to do new signage and then we get a new seal. You know, you're doing signage two or three times, so. And one other thing, Mr. Moron, while we're looking at this, and I was thinking of this after we were talking about it yesterday. So going forward, when we do start to do for different departments, we can probably take the established 1832 out of the bottom and just put 1832 below the shrimp boat, just for the departments, and type the word administration, building, department.
Road department.
You know what I mean? So that way, each one can still have the same logo, but it would just have the, you have a spot to put it.
And it would just take the status to 1832 and you put your department.
Yes.
For the departments.
Public, are we good?
So do we need a motion to accept that, or are we good?
Ah, you don't. That'd make me feel better if you do.
All right. Since it was free.
Commissioner Amerson, you like the logo? I know you can see it. Yep, thumbs up.
All right. So a pleasure to the board?
Certainly.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward? Do we have a second?
I would want everybody to vote on it. But we don't have to.
We want to wait till the.
I would want everybody to vote on it, Dave.
Well, I mean, Commissioner Amerson said thumbs up, but we didn't. I'll run it by him.
Give a hard win.
Where is he at? Oh, there he is.
I'll run it by Commissioner Lockley and ask him. I will.
And just ask him, because like I said.
And if you have any problems, I'll let the board, I'll let you guys.
So we want to not vote today, or?
It don't matter to me. Y'all want a, y'all want a second on that motion?
That'd be fine. We could do it contingent on attorney, I'm used to being attorneys of duty.
I mean, it's okay.
Commissioner Lockley, what he thinks?
Yeah.
We can do it contingent.
I'll amend my motion to do this, approve this contingent on Commissioner Lockley's.
And I know Otis, he's looking at it, so he's making a decision. Okay, I'll second it.
All right, so we do have a motion and second?
That's contingent on Mr. Noah.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, of all the informational items, I have just 11. I just want to mention to the board, we are, those two positions, we've been trying to, we've only gotten about two applications on each. We're going to, let's test Indeed. We're going to test Indeed. We've heard that Indeed, a lot of people locally use Indeed for job search, searches in the county, so we're going to run it there a couple of times. It's 18 bucks per ad. See what it results, and we'll decide if we want to do that in the future, okay? The current applicants that were, like again, wanting to, we reached out, let them know we're going to extend the date so we can run it on Indeed. All right? And ethics training, just look at the calendar.
The only date I have available is the 28th.
Yeah, 21st is definitely out for me. My niece is getting married that day, so.
Okay, great.
The 28th is the only available date I have of those three.
Okay, well, I'm going to shoot for the 28th. Would everybody check their calendars and comment during the week and let me know? I have to, the good thing is I'll contact FAC. We get the recording. We're going to do it, you know, just use the live. The FAC training here in the room.
I'm good with the 28th.
Yeah. That.
Commissioner Sanders, 28th good for you?
What, 28th for you? I can make my day any day.
Commissioner Amerson, 28th, thumbs up? I think he's having Wi-Fi issues.
Yes, he is.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that going to be, is that going to be a Zoom?
Yeah, we could. Yes, yeah, we could do it Zoom. We sure can.
Is that, well, I'm just going to be a single parent that weekend with a seven-year-old.
That's fine. That's fine. We could do it Zoom. Or, Commissioner, when you get back, I'll talk to you. Sorry.
Now, go ahead. You're fine.
I'll talk to you when you get back, Commissioner, because you can also do it, you can do it yourself at your own pace. I could just sign you up for the recording, and you could do it on your own pace on the, on your tablet. So either which way will work fine.
We'll just have to do it for the end of the year.
Before the end of the year, so yeah.
Okay.
We'll talk about it when you get back. So before I do, I'll plan for the in-house on the 28th, okay? And the five-year plan, I just basically copied the email for your reference. And Northwest Florida, I'm Florida, Florida Water Management District, again, that's more of the email with the link. And your next meeting is on October 17th at 9:00.
Where's this five-year plan meeting going to be held?
Oh, I'm going to post that on the website and give you the email, Commissioner. I'm sorry if I didn't. That, there's three different locations for in-person. I'll get that to you. And then there's Zoom. There's a Zoom invite if you want to attend it by Zoom also.
Okay.
All right.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Moron?
That's my report.
Mr. Moron, the, I want to ask before we proceed, the thing we're working on with ship, with Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Have we gotten word from that or where we're at with that?
Not since we talked yesterday, Commissioner, so I haven't had time to double check and see if Mr. Gray was able to get a proposal for me.
Okay, all right. The other thing is, we've handled some of the stuff we looked at with San Diego Island flooding. I want to get together with you, Mr. Moron. There's some areas in East Point specifically that we're having problems with it being extremely dark areas. I know that we had some discussion with the school district about trying to put up lights in some places across the county. I think we need to circle back around with them and make sure, because the only, the only drawback we had to any of that was we don't want the bus stops. If the bus stop is in this area, this corner of this intersection this year or next year, they might want to move it to another area.
That's exactly what the issue was.
So we kind of need to try to nail down with the school district if they're going to have areas that they're going to use commonly or at least for a five or six-year period, so we can start trying to add some of those streetlights to some of those areas.
Yes.
I don't, I know that discussions kind of fell by the wayside, but the need hasn't went away.
Yeah, and you were so right, Commissioner. It was, they couldn't guarantee, you know, where, you know, next year and the following year the buses would stop. So I think as commissioners, especially of your district, you might need to look at, okay. I would tell you, look at a history as to where the bus stops have been for the last three years, kind of make a judgment call moving forward, you know? Okay, if I put the streetlight here, it lights up, you know, this entire street, especially with the new type of lights that they have.
Yes.
You know, they're really bright and.
They're LED.
Yes, the LEDs don't consume as much, but they're really bright. And they're directional.
And I also know that it's, or there's a bunch of bus stops. Wouldn't like, we could do them all in one year either.
Yes.
But you know, some of that has been done in coordination with Duke. They're the ones that actually do the installing. I just want to make sure we don't lose that conversation and some of the stuff we've got going on.
Start it back again.
The other thing is, and I just want to ask, because still a page out of Commissioner Amerson's playbook. This is when we have to do this, we're in a public meeting. I don't know what you guys are doing or have thought about doing about complaints, but I know that our people with concerns, I've had residents, I'll just tell you what I've been going through. I've had residents ask me, well, can't you just, you know, you're our commissioner, can't you just do that? The problem I have with that, and this is what I've told them, I think that bypasses legislative intent that the state did when they preempted us and said that all concerns have to go through a concerns portal, and people have to give their name and phone number and basic information, that people have a right. Basically, I guess, what they were going through at state level, they were saying people have a right to know who's making a complaint against them. That it can't just be anonymous. I don't know if, how you guys are dealing with that, if you're having the same problem I'm having, but some people just don't want to do that. They don't want to put their name down. They don't, you know what I mean? They don't want to cause a problem with their neighbor, but they want to complain, and I was like, I can't facilitate that for you. You know what I mean? So I, anyway, I just brought it up because this is the time we can talk about it.
Yeah, because I, you know, I hear you, Commissioner, because you don't want to allow yourself to be, Attorney Shiller, correct me, to be kind of dragged in to some kind of ethics question as to who it was, who told you that, and you have, you know, that's.
It puts us in a precarious spot as, because number one, we were elected by the people for the people. So it's hard to not take complaints and try to deal with them. But at the same time, we didn't pass the law.
Yeah.
The state did. You know, it kind of puts us in a tough spot. You know, because there's some things you can just do, but some things are, I guess it's more of a judgment call, because some things are more of a valid complaint or something that we can take action about or fall under our purview. Some things are just nitpicky neighbors want to tell on their neighbor to, hopefully they get in trouble kind of deal, you know what I mean? So it really puts us in a bad spot with the preemptive legislation of the state now. You know, if nobody else is dealing with that, I just want to bring it up, because I keep getting that question, you know, we keep wanting people to.
Why can't you?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I get the same stuff, and every time I get those calls, I do, I do refer them to the concerns portal. Whether or not they do, it's their own prerogative, but I do explain, you know, we have, it can't be anonymous, and that deters them. But then their complaint's not valid. I don't want them to feel like that I'm not thinking their complaint's not valid. But the problem is, is I don't want to become my own code enforcement officer.
Yes.
You know, and I feel like sometimes we are put in that position where they expect us to be, and, you know, I know how Attorney Shiller feels about that, because he and us have discussions about it, but I think you're, I agree. It is, it does put us in a precarious situation, and I think hopefully getting a code enforcement officer might alleviate some of the issues that we see anyway.
We should be getting closer to sending out some kind of.
Yeah, I would think so. That should be, since the budget's been approved, we should be getting ready on that.
Attorney Shiller saw that. She looked at me when I tripped back.
I'm sorry.
See, you're like Aaron now. You're not paying attention.
I was working.
That's okay, we're coming to you.
Well, I already had a solution.
What's that?
But nobody will hear me.
Tell us.
Well, I just said, well, she, I ain't going to say because I, well, I just thought it was a good idea to get some of our staff to go ahead and get certified as a code enforcement officer and hire in some other people to enforce that and help in and different things like that. And I don't know, to me, she's got teeth and, you know, she'd do a good job, is what I believe, but, and that was Courtney. And, you know, I just felt like it was good, because she, she don't care going out there and she's going by the rules and the laws that we have, and that's good. And I just thought it'd be good, but I don't think she wants to do it.
Well, everything we have right now, Commissioner, that is coming through that concern, concerns portal, if they're getting handled, they're getting handled by Ms. Courtney.
And she is. That's what I'm saying. I thought, I thought it would be a good idea, because, you know, I just thought it would be a good idea.
Mr. Chairman, people, what they also don't understand, as I get calls too, a week later, like they make the complaint, they make, do the concerns portal. A week later, I'm getting a call, well, what's going on with this? Well, I try to explain our concern. Courtney is very good about keeping it updated, but there is a process. You can't just make a, let's say, a code enforcement complaint and expect something to get done with it like that, you know? It's a process. A letter has to be sent, and everybody has their own rights, human rights, property rights, what have you, and there is a legislative process that has to occur. And a lot of people don't understand that, so I want to emphasize that as well. And I do, when I'm speaking to these individuals, I say, look, it's not going to happen overnight. It takes time. Just be patient. It's frustrating, especially when you've got riffraff going on next door, but it is what it is, so.
It is. And part of our bigger issue, Commissioner, is we're just, we're trying to handle things that everybody else was handling 30 years ago. It's a growth management issue. Everybody else was growing 30 years ago. We're just starting to really see that kind of experience, so you know what I mean? That's what it is.
I know it is. We got a solution to that too, now.
You come full of solutions, Dave.
Going to put a county closed sign, we breached our maximum occupancy.
Yeah, can't do that. They tried that during COVID.
Now, she had the mindset key. It wasn't just me now.
Can't do that.
See what, see what Otis is missing today.
Oh, he's hearing us.
He's hearing us.
He's catching it.
Oh, yeah, but he's not, he's choosing not to comment.
But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, because I knew we're in a public meeting, so we could actually talk about it. That's, I was just waiting for the appropriate time. Any more discussion for Mr. Moron before we shift? Before we go to Attorney Shiller, let's take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, and the armory is, I can't remember how many years ago that's been, but that could have been prior to the formosans coming into the county.
Well, the formosans are usually the ones that emerge, you'll see them coming out of the ground, out of the building. But you got four, you got subterranean, formosan, dry wood, and damp wood.
Let me ask another question related to this. On the report that we looked at, unless I was reading wrong, they were saying there were signs that formosan termites were there, not that they currently are there, is that correct?
It actually mentioned it did not view any live termites, but there was signs of the termites.
The report has also acted.
Yeah, it said evidence, yeah. Yeah, but I mean, he didn't see any, like, actually crawling around, but yes, there was evidence of termites.
Right, any more discussion before we vote to table? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Although not on my report, I did check my email, we just got the closing statement draft in for the three acres on Highway sixty-five. So we should have that reviewed and ready to go by the next board meeting.
Alright, sounds good.
Item number two also came up subsequent to your last board meeting. Duke Energy has contacted staff who then forwarded the request to me. Duke Energy is inquiring whether the county commission will engage in the process to negotiate the potential purchase and sale by Duke Energy of a county-owned property here in Apalachicola, which is next to apparently an existing energy tower. They're doing some sort of, I guess, tower rehab, tower improvement. And they're just wanting to know if the county would engage in this process for the potential purchase and sale of property. It's described as Block H two Lot five in the city of Apalachicola. The county appraiser's website shows a market value of thirty thousand dollars. I would suggest that we would need to get a, an actual appraisal to determine what the actual property would be worth. And then there's the process you have to go through for the purchase and sale of property. And depending on the value of, the value determines the process. So I would like for the board, if you're interested, to authorize me to get an appraisal and then to begin a process of discussing a possible purchase and sale to bring those terms back to the board at some future meeting.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions. One, well, the rate the appraisals are coming back, it might be next year. But who would, would Duke pay for the appraisal or would we have to pay for the appraisal? Because I don't.
That would be part of the discussion. Typically, we would pay for it because we want the appraiser working for us. And then what we would do when we get, assuming we get to a closing, then we could just, you know, recruit all or part of that cost from Duke Energy at the closing. But like the current contracts we have now, for some reason it doesn't close, then we would be responsible for the appraisal cost.
And appraisals are running how much nowadays?
Uh, generally, the ones I've seen, between five and seven, five hundred and seventy-five, something like that.
Okay.
Pleasure, the board.
I don't, I mean. It don't matter to me. This is, hold on, can they start negotiations or?
Just to chat with and find out. I mean, we can hold off on the appraisal cost. Why don't we just chat and then talk and then come back?
Won't they just call you and you talk to them and they talk to you? You know what I'm saying? Just find out what they want.
Okay.
Without having to do any kind of emotion, but.
They want to purchase the property, right?
Yes, they want to purchase the property. I'm not asking the board to make a decision whether to purchase and sell now just for me to talk to them.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. If, if you know.
We can hold off on the appraisal. I mean, there's clearly some concern about that. But does the board, I would, if I'm going to negotiate a potential purchase and sale of public property, I want to have the board's motion.
That's right.
Approval through motion and vote of the board, one way or the other, upper daily.
Even so, again, as I was saying earlier, maybe we should wait for Commissioner Amison to be able to be present. That way, we have that more option than.
I'm good with that. I am absolutely finalizing.
Because he may want to make, it's his, is it his district or Commissioner Lockley's district? I guess Bauer would be Commissioner Amison's, no, Commissioner Lockley's.
No, this would be Commissioner Lockley's district.
Okay.
Sure, I'll just mark it to bring it back up at the next meeting.
So does it need to be tabled or can it just be, it said board action requested?
I said, well, discussion and possible action. I'm okay with just board direction.
Okay.
Second, and the, and the motion, we don't feel like we want to do it. We want, we want some of the other commissioners there. Yeah, right, Commissioner Wolf?
Yes, I mean, I, I, he just, he didn't say he needed a motion, but I just, I would prefer if, no, it's not Commissioner Amison's district, but he is, you know.
Yeah.
I just think we need a fuller board.
Okay, I'm definitely not pushing the issue. I was just asked the question, so I'm bringing it up. Um, okay, the next item for discussion and the least direction from the board to me is on a, this was the stormwater fill ordinance that the board had discussed at the last board meeting. Presently, the procedural posture that you're in is that the public hearing is scheduled to take place at eleven oh five at your next meeting, October seventeenth, because the board's instructions were to set this for public hearing as soon as possible. I have not yet had this draft reviewed by Mr. Carrington, but we are in a procedural position to move forward. However, I would need to finalize this ordinance and have it on file with the clerk's office by Thursday, which is when the advertisement will be published. It has to be published and on record for ten days preceding the public hearing on October the seventeenth. After thinking about this, the ordinance that I have drafted, I'll just read the proposed title. It is an ordinance regulating and requiring stormwater management on all property zoned for single-family residential uses on Saint George Island, Florida, including the C four zone property, which is used only as a single-family residence, providing standards for stormwater management, requiring a permit before adding fill to property regulated by this ordinance, establishing standards for removal of trees from property regulated by the ordinance, requiring a permit for removal of trees, providing a penalty for violation of this ordinance, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing survivability and provision of an effective date. And what I have done with this proposed draft, commissioners, is in your current critical shoreline ordinance, you have a stormwater management standard, which I have duplicated and repeated in this ordinance. Your general rule in your zoning code is that residential properties do not have to provide any stormwater management plan or stormwater management system on their residential property, only for commercial, with one exception. And that is in your critical shoreline ordinance, you do have a requirement for residences built in the critical shoreline to meet a certain stormwater management system standard. So what I've done is essentially have a proposal that will modify your current zoning code to apply that same critical shoreline stormwater management system to all of the residentially zoned property, single-family residential zone properties on the island. Selecting, not picking on the island, but selecting the island for this particular draft because from what I understand, the vast, vast majority of the problems, not all the problems, but the vast majority of the problems with people bringing in fill and clear cutting lots is occurring on Saint George Island, which seems to me to have some peculiar and unique attributes because it is a barrier island and because that seems to be where the problems are mainly occurring. The penalty would be a hundred dollar a day penalty if you bring in fill or, in this case, the way it's set up, one load of fill or cut down a tree without a permit, then it would be a hundred dollar a day penalty until you get the required permit for an authorized stormwater management plan. So that is essentially the way I'm dealing with this, instead of doing what some other localities have done, which is, you know, you get, like, for the city of Apalachicola, you get ten cubic yards, basically without a permit, anything above that, you go through this permitting process. And they basically charge you a fee to bring in, the more fill you bring in, the more fees you pay to the city for a permit. It seems to me that what the board was trying to accomplish was to make people keep their stormwater on their property. So that's the reason I'm proposing that you deal with this issue on Saint George Island with a stormwater management plan. And the standard essentially that's embedded in your critical shoreline ordinance today says that whatever the natural stormwater flow off of the property before development should be the same flow of stormwater off the property after development. In other words, the development can't let you, you know, push your water off onto the, say, the public roads or the public ditches or your neighbor's property any more so than it would in its natural condition. So any stormwater flow resulting from development would have to be treated on site. The only question that, not the only, but a question that probably needs to be discussed today is does the board, for example, the city of Apalachicola gives you ten cubic yards of fill without having a requirement for a permit? Do y'all want to have some sort of an initial threshold where people can bring in a small amount of fill without having to provide a stormwater management plan or not? The way I've written it right now is, it's just if you do any development, you have to have a stormwater permit. The stormwater management plan has to come from a engineer hired by the property owner who will certify compliance with your stormwater management standards that are presently embedded in your critical shoreline ordinance, but now will be expanded to include all single-family residential development on Saint George Island, whether it's inside or outside of the critical habitat zone.
Yep, I'll turn this over a couple of things.
Sure.
I, I do appreciate your help on working with this in our last meeting. The board itself, the whole board that we had at the time, said they wanted to fast track something to do with fill. And discussions we've had, I think this provided for us being able to address several different issues that are, have been repeated in my district, especially on the island. That's why we're looking at doing it this way. I'm fine with it staying like it is presently, not for passage, but for the public hearing we're going to have, so the public can weigh in on it. You know, I, I, I get that it seems to be adverse, I really do. But we have to have some way to put the brakes on what's, some of the things are going on. So, and I, I think that can come out at the public hearing when we discuss it with the public, we hear from the residents and, you know, what they're good with, what they're not good with. As you know, it's been a, fill has been a problem in a lot of areas. So the, the only thing that brought out at commissioners, in all fairness, the reason Turnusure presented it for Saint George Island, is I, I told him that I, I really perceive that eighty-five to ninety percent of our complaint calls about these kinds of issues have been on Saint George Island because of its unique characteristic, it being a barrier island, it being only, you know, such a distance wide, it's more long than it is wide, you know, so. Some of these things are, it's not just affecting that property owner, it's potentially affecting those around them when they do some of these actions. So that's the reason why we're looking at it in this fashion. But I, I think some of those details might come out of the public hearing is, is what I'm trying to express.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I, I hate to say this, I don't, but maybe we can use this as a, how do I say, a guinea pig, if you will, for some of the other areas.
Well, first step.
I know that a lot of the areas is, are not like the island and everybody, every place is different in each of our districts, how they outweigh. But getting back to the stormwater, residential stormwater drainage attorney's order, you stated that the island should be covered under that critical shoreline caveat, I guess? What about, say, some of these areas that, in my opinion, in my district, that are residential that may need stormwater drainage or culvert in their yard, but they don't fall under that category per our ordinance? Is that something we would have to address?
That would have to be addressed by ordinance. And right now, what I'm proposing is limited just to the geographic area of Saint George Island, which means that, say, in, in any other area of the county that's not Saint George Island, if you have a residential property that's not in the critical shoreline ordinance, then you, you don't have to comply with these stormwater management requirements that are currently embedded in your Franklin County zoning code. And they've, they've been there, from what I can tell, since probably, I think, nineteen eighty-nine or nineteen ninety, so these are not new standards.
So in other words, if we did require people to get residential stormwater drainage that's not under that current ordinance, we would have to make another ordinance to require that?
Yes. Yes, which is what's being done with Saint George Island, or proposed, I should say, for Saint George Island.
Thank you.
And, and just so the, the public has some idea of what we're talking about, in, in addition to the aspirational statement that the, the stormwater after development that sheets off of your property should be the same as the stormwater that came off of your property prior to development, there's also a specific language that I've taken out of the critical shoreline ordinance and proposed for this new ordinance. It says that the, whenever you file a single-family development application for development as part of the permit application, a site plan pursuant to section three oh one point zero four of, of the Franklin County zoning code, code, that includes a detailed stormwater management plan for treating the first one and a half inches of runoff. And then whenever sole precipitation of a site will allow the infiltration of the required stormwater treatment volume within seventy-two hours, the stormwater system shall consist of offline retention practices. And to the greatest extent possible, it's recommended that retention areas be integrated into a site's open space and landscaping areas so as to reduce operation and maintenance needs. And, and so that is complimentary to the idea that the stormwater will be no greater than that which existed before the development. So there are some specific standards as well as that aspirational statement or directive that the stormwater after development be no greater than it was before development. And it would be the obligation of a Florida licensed engineer to prepare the plan that certifies compliance with that standard. And that would be at the expense of the homeowner. It was, I mean, we don't have anyone on staff that could do this, we don't have an engineer on staff, we have an outside engineer. And I've debated whether to recommend having your outside engineer certify compliance or have the homeowner hire someone. At this point, my recommendation to the board is that you require the property owner to hire their own engineer to certify compliance with the stormwater management standard. So we'll see what happens at the public hearing, but that's my recommendation to the board.
Mr. Chairman, do y'all have anything to weigh in on this? Again, I, I want to stress, I don't think this was an effort to cut out some of the rest of the county or some of the districts. It's just trying to take one bite and see where we can move forward.
So we don't have to take no action over this?
No, ma'am, this is just for discussion, and if y'all have any, for example, you know, I, I draft these with my understanding of what the board's instructions were at the last meeting. So if I've missed a mark now, it's not letting me know.
Well, there's some of it, I, I, there's some of the, the language, and you and I had a pretty long discussion about it yesterday. But I think some of those things will come out at the public hearing. I would like for the public to weigh in on how it's written.
Okay.
You know, and if they want to see it different, then they can express it to us and we can, because we're here for them. We're representing them, so I think there'd be a better way to approach it.
And Mr. Carrington, I'm going to take this draft to him after the meeting. He may have some, so it may be tweaked a little bit based on his commentary, if any, by the time I finalize this draft and put it on file with the clerk's office by Thursday of this week. But whatever that final version is, I'll make sure it gets out to the commissioners.
Okay. Since this was an addition to our agenda, is there anyone in the room that would like to comment about this publicly? Mr. Malone, can you check and see if, is there anybody on Zoom?
Anyone, yes, sir. Three attendees, anyone on Zoom would like to comment on this, please indicate by raising your hand.
Since it was an addition to our agenda.
Sir? Your hands raised.
Alright.
You want to see the committee, Amison wants to comment now or wait until a public hearing?
Commissioner Amison, do you have any comments to add, sir?
Oh, he might be still muted, hold on.
No, I'll wait till a public.
Okay.
Okay.
You say you wait for the public.
Okay. The only other question I have before we proceed from this, because I know we're going to need a motion today. Do we need to, because of the nature of what we're dealing with, and again, the instructions that were given from when Commissioner Amison was here last meeting with us, that we were trying to fast track something to do with fill, do we need to make a motion today to allow staff not to take any fill permits or anything to do with this until we have this public hearing?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Because we got, I'm fixing to have me a problem out there in my district.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is because what I brought up at the last meeting, we had someone on Saint George Island that had already added, they were told that they could not build what they want to build, so they had already added about, what, eight foot of fill to try to, and then they were wanting the county to give them a permit to put some of those on the ground, because now it's eight foot higher than it was. I mean, you know what I'm saying, so.
Well, you currently have on the books a requirement that a building permit is, is required for people does any development of their property, which in my interpretation would include clearing the land or changing the natural grade of the land. So you already have in place, I think, a, and a working mechanism, were stop work orders placed on those projects?
I just don't think they were, I don't think they were approved.
They weren't approved.
But they were, let me back up. I think it was put in county staff in a predicament where it's kind of hard to tell them no, though, because of the way our current stuff is worded, that's why we're trying to address what we're trying to address. But the way it was currently worded, it was kind of like, I can tell them no, but for what basis do I tell them no? You know what I mean? Just before we leave this, I thought we'd need to have this discussion.
And now you're talking about fill for everybody in the county?
Until we, until we settle this, because we might change it when it comes to the public hearing.
If you did, and I'm going to go ahead and put it up here, Michael, because I think it's important. I mean, staff just informed me, we had a request for nine feet of fill to be approved, they hadn't even got a permit yet. How you going to get a permit for fill when you haven't even got a permit to do the land? Nine foot of, where, where that area is, nine foot of fill is going to flood everybody else out, out of there, and I'm worried about that.
Well, the way, and I haven't talked to your, your building official about what his interpretation is. At least I don't remember if I did, but the way I interpret the code, you have to have a building permit for development. Your current code under section two twenty point two zero, among the various things that constitute development, subsection one F says land clearing constitutes development, requires a permit. If they're developing without a permit, you put a stop work order on it. If they violate the stop work permit, there are penalties for doing that. And then item one G also defines, this is two twenty point two zero, paragraph one, subparagraph G, development also includes fill on a parcel of land. So they've got to get a permit for fill, they've got to get a permit for land clearing, if they're not doing that, put up a stop work order, they violate the stop work order, penalize them.
Wait, so you're saying not to do anything about it, though?
I'm saying I think you've already done something about it. If they violate the code, then there, there are penalties for violating the code, one of which is a stop work order that goes to the property owner and goes to the contractor. But, I mean, I'm not telling the board that you don't have the authority to adopt some sort of an emergency ordinance stopping fill. I'm just saying, I, I think you already have a path forward for enforcement.
So I, I guess the question, and I see Courtney, just, she's listening in the room. So if, if they come in and they pull a permit, how do we control how much fill? You, stand here, how, is, is there anything in the current ordinance that tells us that, no, we could tell it, no, that's too much fill? I'm sorry, we're not approving that. That's, I think that's where the issue is.
That's where the issue is. We don't have anywhere that states, like, if they want to bring in nine feet of fill and they've got a permit, have to get a permit, we can put a stop work order, but if they come in and pull a permit, we have to give them a permit for the nine feet of fill. And I think that's going to impact us and the neighbors in a bad way.
Nine foot of fill, yeah, in a V E zone?
Yeah, there's some that's doing, trying to do five feet in the V E zone. Either way, we don't have any definitive number of how much fill we can, we can't, I can't sit there and tell them, no, you can't bring in nine feet of fill. Because I have nothing to back me up, to say that they can.
So what, what do we do?
Can we give the more than a few minutes to think about it?
Yes, we can, we can.
He's in the hot seat.
We can go through some other stuff and come back to it before we finish, if that's okay.
I, I'd be more than a few minutes to think about it.
Because I, I know, we got a lot of people that put that field out there. We got a lot of people that clear that land out there. But at some point in time, it's not, that, that's not the point. The point is, the people coming in and buying this land is just doing whatever they want without pulling a permit. And they're going to have to learn that in this county, they've got rules to follow.
Yeah.
But it, it's more than that. They don't have nothing that they can hang their hat on when they go to try to enforce it.
Yeah, so I, I feel, to me, honestly, until we can figure out what to do with the ordinance, I feel better with stopping all fill permits right now, until we can figure out the ordinance, because that falls on me. I'm the one who has to issue the, the permits for site prep and fill, and I don't feel comfortable giving someone a, a, an okay to bring in nine feet of fill.
Let's take a recess for a minute.
Alright. All right. Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Mr. Morone, you said that next Wednesday is, there's no conflicts with the court schedule?
Yeah, no, no scheduled conflicts with this room.
And you're okay with that?
Do you, do you have a certain time?
Uh-uh. And is Commissioner Amerson okay?
Commissioner Amerson, are you good with next Wednesday, maybe having a, potentially having a special meeting to address this?
I'll work with y'all in, in, I mean, obviously, I'm, I'm throwing wrench in everything, so I'll, I'll, I'll be the...
Okay.
Only thing I see is that V A B, but I believe that got canceled, correct?
Yes.
What did it do?
V A B? Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Right, so do we need to make a motion to schedule that?
Yes.
Nine AM, ten AM?
I'm going with the same regular time, if y'all are.
I'll make a motion to have a special meeting on Wednesday, October the 11th, at ten AM to discuss this further.
Okay.
So we have a motion to approve this special meeting to address doing a moratorium on fill until we have this public hearing. Correct? That's all we're looking at, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. But it's probably going to be commissioners that we're, we're gonna have to do this in more than one spot. We're just trying to start with the spot that seems to have more of the concerns immediately.
Oh, yeah. And I'm just glad we were in session today in, you know, something like, it's been, it's been getting, you know, a lot of it being done, fill being done to the eastern part of the county, but I thought we could kind of grab a hold of it, but apparently we're not.
Well, it's, like I said, Mr. Chairman, our county's growing by leaps and bounds. We need to, the problem is, is none of this has, hadn't been addressed in the past, because we haven't seen the growth that we've seen in the past few years. So we definitely need to do something, to put something in process, make a process and a procedure to where we don't have these issues continually happening.
Anything else, sir?
Unless the board has any questions for me about my informational items, no, sir.
Did, did we vote on that, or do we still motion? I don't think we ever voted, my bad. On the...
On the special meeting?
Yes.
I think they did vote.
We didn't vote, did we?
We did a motion at the...
We did vote.
Did we vote, Jess? Okay.
We did that?
Just trying to keep up.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
The board has, has recorded a vote.
Okay, that works for me. Uh, so that's gonna be at the next meeting, the, as far as the next regular meeting is when we're gonna be doing that public hearing, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And there are a couple of things that I want to mention while we're on your part of the report. So, uh, number one is, I think, and, and, and Mr. Morone and I, I'm gonna be there on behalf of the rest of the board, are meeting with the sheriff tomorrow, as we're gonna continue to discuss the bear problem we're having in the county. Uh, I'll reiterate, this is the same thing we expressed to F W C four or five months ago when they were here, about, you know, when they gave us the estimate that by 2030 there would be 12,000 bears in the county, and there's 12,000 residents. So that was their report, not ours. Uh, so anyway, one of the things that I perceive that's gonna come up that might help is us moving toward mandatory trash pickup in Franklin County. Uh, I don't know how that entails or what it would cause, uh, but I think it's something we could maybe put out for a request for proposals, and I think one of the problems we had in the past was some of the companies that wanted to propose didn't want to do the billing, and I think we make that a part of it. They have to do the whole service or none of the service. Uh, you know what I mean? So, again, I, I just think that's something that's gonna come up. Uh, I do, I do also, at some point, attorney Schuler, I don't think we're ready to do it now, we have a couple of things on the table, but as we've gotten past the tourism season that we have in the county, before next March, definitely before then, probably sometime, preferably early November, I do want to have a workshop on revising the golf cart ordinance on St. George Island, because we were kind of ambushed with the, uh, what the legislature passed with low speed vehicles. But in reading through all that documentation, I think this board can still designate that some roads are not usable even by low speed vehicles for safety concerns. And I think we definitely need to have that discussion before we have what we had last season. One of the things I think that also needs to be discussed, and it can come out in that workshop, we have several people on the, on the island businesses and some that aren't even on the island, that are renting golf carts and are low speed vehicles. And, you know, I know that there's some discrepancy between their practice and our ordinance, and I'll just say this, I think they need to make sure that this workshop goes on before it happens, they need to be here to discuss it, because they can either comply or we can just go away with no rentals on the island. One of the two need to happen, and that's the discussion I think we need to have. For self, in early November, when's our, when's our meeting scheduled for November?
Oh, give me a second, I'll let you know.
I think we got enough for October, is the only reason I say November.
Oh, let's see. Seventh and the 21st.
Okay. So do you all want to do it in the afternoon, the seventh?
No, number seven.
Right, because workshops are at like five o'clock in the afternoon, correct?
Your call.
Uh, that depends on that.
You guys have that flexibility now.
What do you want to do?
To put it...
It's up to you. I mean, do you think that the public...
I, I want to make sure that the public can be here. I don't want them to say that they weren't able to be.
So that would be, in my opinion, it would be five o'clock then.
Yeah. So the seventh, five o'clock. I can't make that motion, but I, I do make that recommendation.
Do we need that in the form of a motion?
I don't know.
Yes, yes, workshop.
I'm sorry, which workshop? Is this the golf carts?
Yes.
From St. George Island.
Yes.
And low speed vehicles.
Yes, include those as well, yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
All right, so we have a motion to approve that workshop's scheduled for the seventh of November, five o'clock in the afternoon by Commissioner Ward.
And I made the second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Uh, just by way of discussion, that's, again, that's not me trying to be adverse toward those that are renting, I'm great with people making money off tourism, we all do that, but we do need a standard of practice. And we either need to amend our ordinance or they need to fall under what that ordinance says. One of the two.
And, and while we're at it, Mr. Chairman, if you're finished, I've got a couple of things, and I know Attorney Schuler and I have talked about this in the past, but, and I, again, you know, I want to discuss this in, because we can't only do it on this board, and maybe we can elaborate more when Commissioner Amerson gets back, but I want to discuss countywide voting. I know there was a judgment brought down. I don't know if you maybe can, at the next meeting, can come back and elaborate on that?
I can.
Because, okay, so I want, I want that to be addressed, um, because, you know, we talked, it was a referendum, it was on the ballot many, many years ago, it was a majority vote that we, everybody in the community and county wanted countywide voting, but I guess some judgment came down from the federal government stating that we couldn't. So I want that, that to be brought up and addressed. In addition to that, I want to bring up the whole public-private road issue again, because I feel like these people pay taxes, they should be allowed to have a road that's decent and able to be driven down and maintained. I don't want the county making a deal with them so that they could do the work. Now, I want adoption of private roads to public roads. I know there's a Florida statute on that as well, but I always go back to Poggi Road, I don't recall it being up to standards when it got adopted to be a public road versus private. So there's just things I'm, I'm thinking about long-term. I don't obviously want a workshop or anything about it, I just want it to be addressed. And we've had a workshop on the public, public-private road issue already, I don't want to workshop that to death either, but I do want, again, the discussion about it at the next meeting on both topics. That's all I have.
Well, I do have another couple of things. So, uh, just so you know, the, and we've already discussed this, and it doesn't have to be at the next meeting, but I do want us to definitely have it at some point. I know we've talked about, uh, business registration of businesses in unincorporated Franklin County. Where I'm coming from is, it's not being adverse to the businesses. We're not trying to license whether somebody's able to sell alcohol or not. We're not trying to license whether they're able to serve food or not, the state handles that. All we're trying to say is they are a restaurant establishment in our county that serves alcohol or whatever, you know, rent golf carts or whatever they do. So we want businesses are doing what. The, the, the reason why I'm pushing for that has more to do, as we deal with code enforcement, with some of the things we're facing, if we have a business registration, then we have a way of revoking that registration if they're not doing properly. Uh, and I just think it's a necessary stat we at least need to talk about. Uh, and, and we're, again, we're still not any closer, but we're working on some of the stuff with, uh, making the discussion public and, and, and this board potentially taking steps on renaming our parks and addressing them as to, to start doing sports tourism in the county, so we can allow for T D C funds to help with the, the promotion of those parks. The other thing is, uh, just so everyone is aware, because everybody in the public might not have been in our legislative delegation meeting or a part of it, uh, one of the things that we're trying to address through the Florida Association of Counties, uh, through legislative this year, is the opportunity for all small counties, not just Franklin County, but including Franklin County, the way the state has it set up with their sales tax, there's two and a half percent that are available to Franklin County. But because we enacted, the county enacted a, in this way it's written up, because they enacted the one cent small county surtax first, none of the others are available, even by referendum. So we're asking the legislature to look at this year, and I've had the opportunity and the, the benefit of being able to sit down and talk with Senator Simon and Representative Cho before that legislative delegation meeting, to, to make sure that they were at least not opposed to us pushing for that. Because again, it would have to be voted on by the people. Uh, there is, there's a half cent tax for engine care, there's other, other half cent taxes, there's a half or a full cent for, solely for infrastructure that could be passed, and again, these are sales taxes. These are not ad verum. And, and one of the things I want to mention that I failed to mention at the legislative delegation meeting, when our T D C group was down at this, uh, Visit Florida Conference, the governor's conference, they had something that was, uh, shared with them by Orlando, because they were the ones putting it on, that Orlando was able to say, because they had the, the, the work done for them, in, in Orange County, half of their sales taxes collected are tourism-based, fifty percent of sales taxes, not just the T D C tax. Their total sales taxes they take in, half of it is paid by tourists, paid by visitors. So I asked Mr. Solomon to have that same group do those figures for Franklin County. Sixty-five percent of our taxes are paid by the visitors. So even if we were trying to put something on a referendum and we were allowed to, for every dollar that a resident of this county pays in sales tax on something they purchase, it equals three dollars. That's the impact of tourism on our county. So I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that. Uh, that's one of the reasons we're doing it, not to try to find another way to tax our residents or put something else on your back, trying to know that it would benefit us greatly, because we're gonna collect twice as much as we're gonna receive from, from us that live here.
Mr. Chairman, I'm...
That's all I have.
I'm glad you brought that up, because at the legislative delegation, there was, it was a pretty good sized room full of a lot of people. When you were up there talking, I don't know if anybody else noticed, but there was a, I don't know who it was, but it was somebody in a, in a seat adjacent to us that was kind of like, under her breath sighing when you said tax. And, and I, and I was like, I hope we bring this up, that it's not really a, our tax, it's a, people coming and buying a float at the dollar store to go to the beach tax.
That's right.
And that's how I really look at it, so...
Yep.
And, and we could do so much with it, there's a, and I, I brought this back up in many meetings past, and that's why we went in the direction we are, but, and still it has to be voted on by the people. It's not like we're doing it, it still has to be voted on by the people.
It would have to be done by referendum.
By referendum, correct.
Yes. Anybody have anything else? I'll close my, just so y'all know. Go ahead, sir.
Um, there's, there's, uh, we're, we're gonna have to address something, and I feel like the county needs to get ahead of it before it, it goes to a state level, and that's a, a possible ordinance on mud motors north of the Apalachicola Bridge, in the, in Long Bridge, in the, uh, Estuary area. I don't know if, if y'all have had concerns. Most of the people that are, that are complaining about it locally are, are the duck hunters right now, but the problem is, they're, they're gonna have a F W C commission hearing soon, and if they go to the state with it, um, you know, we could potentially be looking at a possible, uh, no motor zone up there, if, if it, if it's left to the state to decide. Uh, I would rather see the county be proactive, and that way it alleviates the state from potentially taking any stance on it, because if that happens, then it's not gonna just be a few disgruntled hunters, you're gonna have a no motor zone where you, we got crabbers, we've got, you know, people that's making a living that, that utilizes those, that area. And I would just hate to see the state come in with a hard fist, whenever we could possibly take some actions now as a county to, where they would say, hey, look, they're, they're putting something in place, we don't need to, you know, come down, um, and, and with iron fist on this or whatnot. And, 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 you know, I, I'm, I'm the last person that wants to drop an ordinance on something like that, but we've done it in the past, uh, if you look at the airport, airboat ordinance that's south of the bridge, you know, we could do something similar to that. It's just something, because I'm just, I'm just concerned that if they do take this before the F W C commission, they're gonna come back and, uh, and, and get something a little more than what we're, you know, than what the people that are concerned about it are, are asking for, if, if that makes sense to you. I would just, uh, and, and I've had discussions with, uh, people within the F W C on that matter, you know, you, like I said, be careful what you ask for, because you may get a whole lot more than what you really want. So, uh, I, I think that's something that we as commissioners need, need to discuss in here, uh, in the near future, and see if we can't come up with something to, uh, to, to alleviate that from potentially happening.
Sounds good, Commissioner. Have they scheduled that meeting yet?
Uh, they have, uh, I'm, I'm not sure the actual date, the commission date, um, I could get that information and, and, uh, get it to Michael to get to everybody, but, uh, you know, it's, it's, I've talked to the people around, uh, I've had numerous discussions with them that, that are, that are, that are ones that are, that are concerned with this, and I'm concerned with it too, to a certain point, uh, and I see their frustrations. Their frustration lies with out of state hunter, or not out of state, but out of town hunters and some out of state hunters coming in, uh, you know, that we've had some, uh, issues over arguments and, you know, threats with firearms, over duck lines, stuff like that. The problem is, 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 uh, they come in with these mud motors and, and whatnot, they don't have to navigate the traditional channels like us local people know, so they, uh, they, they run a ground and, and with a conventional outboard, so they got these mud motors and they can just run across all the grass flats and all that, do some damage to the grass. I'm not gonna say they're the only ones, I mean, I've jumped flats too, but, um, you know, if, if, if it goes to F W C and they come in, their biologists start seeing some damage to those grass flats, uh, it, they're not gonna just, you know, say, hey, we're gonna do it with mud motors, they're gonna do it no motor zone, and there, there's evidence where they've done it in other areas. Uh, and, and I just would, you know, like I said, if that happens, you gotta realize how many people, you know, just take a look when you cross the bridge, how many crab pots is right there north of the bridge. That's gonna shut a lot of things down, and we need to be careful. Um, but, but going back to where I kind of got sidetracked, we're going back, uh, the, the people that are concerned, that, that's what's, that's what's kind of, uh, stimulated this whole, uh, deal, ordeal. Um, if we, if we do an ordinance and we put people, you know, do away with mud motors north of the bridge in that Estuary area, it's gonna force people, it's gonna navigate those channels to run a traditional outboard, and it'll put them back into the little finger channels that, that keeps them off the flats for the, for the majority of it, you know, so, um, it's just, I just, I know that it's coming, I'm, I'm surprised that the, the gentleman that I've, and a group of people that I've talked to, um, haven't come before us yet, I know they're coming, um, they're, they're just, they're gonna get a little more organized, I believe, but I, I just think that it would benefit the county, uh, to go ahead and get ahead of that, and, and at least let this group of individuals know that we are working in that direction, because like I said, I don't want it to go to the commission and then the heavy hand of the state come down and, and, uh, and, and give us a whole lot more than what we want, you know?
Well, do we need to, uh, do we need to have any kind of action on that today as far as, Attorney Schuler, the permission to start, at least writing a draft on what an ordinance would be?
I would let Attorney Schuler speak to Commissioner Amerson when he comes back, and then...
Traditionally, you don't take action under commissioner comment anyway, so...
We're not commissioner comments yet.
We're still under your report.
It's still under your report.
I'm sorry, I was working on my email.
All this has been directed toward you, sir.
Wait, I should have...
Chairman, Chairman Jones.
I'll get up with Commissioner Amerson and chat with him.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
To, to, to be fair, I, I don't think the individuals would, would, you know, if we, uh, you know, tabled this a little bit or pushed it back, as long as they know that we're, as, as their representatives right here are, are at least moving on it, I, I believe we'll be fine. We don't, I don't think they're gonna jump the gun and run and, and try to circumvent the process or anything like that, so... I, I wouldn't be emergent with all of my comments, but I mean, I'm, but we do need to be proactive in it, I feel.
Well, we're, we're all have the same job, sir, that's the only reason I brought it up, so, trying to move everything forward.
Well, and...
I, I was, the, the point I was making, I didn't, I didn't want you, uh, Attorney Schuler to feel like he was in the hot seat all of a sudden having to get this, you know, this ball rolling fast. I know you guys are, are on the same team with me and all, but I'm just, I didn't want him to feel as though he was pressured to, to start running with it. I just feel like, uh, that, that... to feel as though he was pressured to start running with it. I just feel like that they'll be patient with us. Let's put it that way.
All right, sounds good. Commissioner Jones?
I was fixing to say something. It would be, it would be nice if we wouldn't have to be doing anything, if the people would come in there and do the permitting, and then, you know, anyway, we're gonna be okay. On the sports complexes, I brought the subject up before. When we built Kendrick Park over there, it is called the Willis Kendrick Sports Complex, so you don't have to do nothing for it to be able.
That's right.
That's the reason why we named it. That's the reason why, when I come back, nothing has been done, and I'm saying, that's why we named it the Sports Complex, because you can't get much, anyway, many more. But anyway, now we're gonna get the rest of them and follow, put them in line.
Potentially, yes, ma'am, that's what we're doing.
And then that'll be good.
All right. Anything else for Attorney Schuler before we go to Commissioner Comment?
Just one thing.
Judge Russell would say that's more on your plate than you can say grace over.
I didn't, there's still some things written in my notebook, sir. You're good.
Hey, just one thing. I gotta ask Commissioner Amerson, have you killed anything yet? All this? Look at it.
I, and I want to tell y'all real quickly, I text Michael during recess earlier that I apologize, but as you notice, I've moved from room to room to try to find a quiet area. And this is the bedroom, so the next thing I'm moving to is the bathroom.
What have you done before that, sir?
Tell your friend behind you, hey.
That'd be my brother-in-law. He missed one, I believe. I hadn't got the lowdown on that, but we're gonna, we're gonna find out here in just a minute.
All right. Any other Commissioner Comments, anyone else?
But Commissioner Sanders, trust me, if I kill, you'll probably hear me from Florida if I get that, if I get that big mug, so I'll keep posting.
I wanted to tell, I wanted to tell you, what are you doing sitting there? Because you're missing the morning hunt.
I sacrificed Franklin County.
Maybe you'll kill something this afternoon.
Never know.
I'm trying to live right.
Maybe a time different where he is.
No, it's Eastern, it's Eastern.
Oh, okay.
Any other Commissioner comments?